I will call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please, Lupe?
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Oh, she's online.
Okay, here, thank you. Trustee Hernandez is present. Trustee Hoffman?
Here.
Trustee Ino?
Here.
Trustee Vela?
Here.
Trustee Vedas, he's away, he'll be back. Thank you, and student trustee Francis?
Here.
Thank you.
Um, I will again lead us in the flag salute, if you could please rise. All right. Today, the board will adjourn the meeting in memory of Michael Snyder, Michael Hammond, and Detective Joshua Kelly Eakland, Victor Loomis, and William Osborne. Michael Snyder was a valued member of the East LA College Facilities Department. He passed July 31st, 2025, at his home surrounded by his family after losing his battle with cancer. Michael began his career at ELAC in September of 2022, holding the position as Lead Electrician. Not only did he excel in his professional duties, but also fostered a warm, welcoming atmosphere among colleagues. His talent and passion led to enhancing ELAC's campus efficiency across various aspects, including operations, infrastructure, and sustainability of ELAC's electrical system. Michael often expressed that ELAC students and staff were a joy to work with, and his work made a big impact on student comfort in the classrooms. He also owned and ran his own very own electric company. Michael is married to his loving wife, Yvette, for 23 years, that were full of adventures, amazing travels, and wonderful family memories with his two sons and his two daughters. As we reflect on the many memories shared with Michael, we are reminded of the joy and passion he brought to the workplace. His sense of humor, helpfulness, his brilliant mind, and his willingness to teach will profoundly be missed. We extend our prayers and deepest condolences to the Snyder family at the most difficult time as we, as the ELAC family, are impacted by his loss. By this loss, he will be deeply missed by the ELAC family. Uh, Michael Hammond was a dedicated custodian at LA Trade Tech College and a valued member of LA Trade Tech Campus Family. His hard work and committed efforts will help, efforts helped keep the college environment safe and welcoming for the past 10 years that he worked at Trade Tech. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues during this difficult time. Michael's contributions to our LACC D community will be remembered and deeply missed. Chancellor Ramon?
Thank you so much, um, Board President Ino. In addition to the loss of Mr. Hammond, we have another tragedy that took place on July 18th. Uh, you may be aware there was a horrific tragedy involving the loss of three deputies in an explosion at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Training Facility. What you might not know is that these three deputies were part of the LACC D community. Detective Joshua Kelly Eakland, Victor Lemus, and William Osborne Kane through our very own Sheriff's Academy at East Los Angeles College. Uh, they were our home, so I want to extend my deepest and heartfelt condolences to their families and to the entire, uh, Los Angeles Sheriff's, uh, family. This is a really unimaginable loss, and of course, our thoughts are with all of them who are grieving their families. Uh, will always be part of us, and we hold them, uh, close in our hearts during this incredible, difficult time.
Uh, um, if you could please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Public comments. The First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect the famatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular agenda items?
We have two.
Um, Jeff Hicks and Anna Lee? First is Jeff Hicks.
Hi, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Ramon, I want to thank you guys for, um, letting us speak today. So, my name is Jeff Hicks, I am an Associate Professor of English ESL at Los Angeles City College, also our Academic Senate's Vice President. And this year is going to be my 10th year in the district, my 10th year at LA City College. And as part of that, I'm going to be comprehensively evaluated for my work as a professor here. And that's a good thing. It's good to know where I can make improvements, it's good to know, you know, what I'm doing right. And I trust that the administrators at my college and my peers will evaluate me fairly. Today, on your agenda, you're going to be asked to vote on item Y1, which is a contract extension for the college presidents at our colleges in the district. And the thing is, at least three of those college presidents have not been comprehensively evaluated within the last two years. Now, the contract does allow them to be comprehensively evaluated once every three years, but it would seem to me that it would probably be in the district's best interests to make sure that our college presidents, the most important, highest administrator on our campuses, are actually comprehensively evaluated before that contract extension happens. In addition, as part of that evaluation process, the chancellor has given the option to give these presidents a step raise, either a zero or a one-step raise. But that's not happening at this meeting. Two members, two of our college presidents are getting a step raise, but not because of any comprehensive evaluation. So I'm kind of wondering how that works. Now, I'm not saying that any of our college presidents don't deserve a contract extension. I'm not saying that at all. But I am saying that perhaps the Board of Trustees and the chancellor should look at the processes by which we do this and the timeline so that we're at least getting one comprehensive evaluation and for our presidents before they're given a contract extension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next we have Anna Lee.
Hi, everybody, uh, my name is Anna Lee. I'm a faculty member and the Academic Senate President at Los Angeles City College. I'm here today to express similar concerns to what my colleague Jeff Hicks just mentioned about the proposed extension of the college president's contracts prior to a comprehensive evaluation. This is not the first time I've raised process-related concerns with the board. Previously, I spoke about the presidential selection process at Los Angeles Southwest College, where the role of constituent input appeared to be ignored in the final decision. As I understand it, comprehensive evaluations for college presidents are conducted every three years, and these are distinct from the annual evaluations. Annual evaluations include only a self-assessment, and I quote, "do not require structured data gathering." Since we are now approaching the three-year mark, it seems reasonable to ask why the comprehensive evaluation has not yet taken place and why a contract extension and salary step advancement is being considered beforehand. In our district, full-time faculty undergo rigorous evaluation before earning tenure and continue to be evaluated regularly throughout their careers. These processes foster accountability, improvement, and trust. It stands to reason then that leadership decisions, especially contract extensions, should be guided by similarly high standards. Comprehensive evaluations are an essential part of shared governance. They provide meaningful feedback and help ensure that leadership decisions reflect the experiences of those who work most closely with the president. Moving forward with a contract extension before completing this process may unintentionally suggest that input and accountability are being set aside. So I respectfully urge the board to pause any action on the extension until a comprehension evaluation, a comprehensive evaluation is completed with meaningful input from faculty, staff, students, and other key stakeholders, because doing so would affirm the district's commitment to transparency, shared governance, and thoughtful leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is disclosures. Chancellor, can you please lead the agenda item on disclosures?
Thank you again, Board President Ino. Uh, prior to proceeding to vote on the matters before the board today, trustees are requested to advise staff if there are any items on the agenda for which they have received a contribution from a participant in the matter, which requires disclosure and recusal under the Levine Act and other conflict of interest law. Trustees, when your name is called, please advise if you have disclosures to make on any items on the agenda, and if so, identify the agenda item for each such item. Please also state the basis of the conflict by either identifying the donor of a disqualifying campaign donation or providing information about another disqualifying financial interest. Trustee Bueno?
Absent.
Uh, trustee Henderson?
None.
Trustee Hernandez?
None.
Trustee Hoffman?
None.
Trustee Ino?
None.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Vedas, absent. Thank you.
Approval of Agenda and Order of Business as Minutes. Um, first is the land acknowledgement. The Los Angeles Community College District holds lands that originally and still are inhabited by the Gabrillano Tongva Gabrillano Band of Mission Indians, Kids Nation, and the San Manuel, San Fernando, and San Fernandino Tatavian Band of Mission Indians. We honor and respect the elders and the descendants as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. Before we proceed, Chancellor Ramon, are there any changes to the agenda and order of business?
Yes, thank you, President Ino, we have one correction, it's for business item W11. There is a typographical error to the contract number that's currently listed as 4500329678. The correct number is 4500329922.
May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda of order of business with the request of the amendment?
So moved.
Same move by Henderson? Second by Ino? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Trustee Advisory Vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Not present. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas, not present.
May I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes regarding, um, regular board meeting in closed session of July 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Henderson, second by Vela. Um, any discretion? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis Advisory Vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas, not present.
Great. Um, Representative Reports? Do any members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the board? Please.
Good afternoon. President Ino, members of the board, Chancellor Ramon. For the record, I am Dr. Deborah Harrington, President of the Teamsters, representing our district deans. Um, I, I want to start by saying on behalf of our members, I offer strong support and appreciation for the resolution honoring Labor Day, which rightly uplifts the enduring contributions of working people in the vital role of unions, past and present, in advancing rights, safety, and equity in the workplace. It is especially meaningful to see the recognition of our own LACC D labor partners um, as essential to the mission of accessible, high-quality education. Equally important, the resolution on accountability and transparency of federal officials underscores our shared responsibility to protect the dignity and safety of all students and employers, or and employees. Together, these resolutions affirm LACC D's commitment to justice, transparency, and the value of every individual on our campuses. I also want to offer our members' appreciation for the well-earned negotiated salary schedules and differentials increase you are voting to affirm today. I'm assuming you're voting to affirm today. And, uh, speaking of well-earned, I want to support those union members across the board who will be taking advantage of the SERPs, as I am assuming this body will be approving that proffered resolution as well. One point I want to stress about the SERP is that I expect many of my fellow Teamsters will be taking advantage of it. Again, rightly so, as they deserve this opportunity for all of the good work and service they have delivered to the district. However, I do want to stress that our Teamsters will be vigilantly adhering to our CBA and will expect that the mission-critical dean positions across our colleges will be replaced as soon as possible, and that the workload provisions in our CBA will be faithfully observed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, James McKeever, AFT 1521, Faculty Guild President. Uh, this month, you have multiple vital resolutions on the agenda. One resolution is to recognize the numerous labor units of the LACC D from, uh, and Labor Day. From the resolution, I quote, "The Board of Trustees of Los Angeles Community College District hereby recognize the six bargaining units as essential colleagues in fulfilling the mission of the LACC D to provide accessible, high-quality, and affordable education to our service area communities as valued partners in a vital voice for all workers in our district." This sentiment, thank you, this sentiment is one that I know every labor unit, unit in this room shares. We all want the same thing, and that is to be, that is the continued success of the LACC D and for the, for the service of our students. The second resolution I would like to talk about is the potential supplementary retirement program, SERP. This is a thoughtful way to deal with a questionable budget future. This will allow the district to save money and reward faculty, staff, and administrators who have dedicated their careers to educating our students. Instead of resorting to the far-too常go-to of cutting adjuncts classes, this allows campuses to examine where and when they need to hire more replacement faculty, staff, and administrators without job loss. Last, I want to mention the resolution ensuring accountability, transparency, and identification of federal officials on LACC D campuses. It is unbelievable that we now live in a country where we need a resolution to remind the federal government to implement, I quote, "implement a constitutionally sound policy and process for the treatment of individuals, including immigrant and undocumented." Or that law enforcement must be identified. Without this identification, we do not know if this is actual law enforcement, ICE agents, or some jackboot neo-Nazis or Proud Boys kidnapping individuals and terrorizing communities. We have, we have the right to ask law enforcement for identification, and it is a sad day in America when we have to remind the government of that fact. AFT 1521 strongly supports these resolutions and look forward to their passing. We will never agree on all things, and that is okay. But we can agree on the need to protect our students and support those faculty, staff, and administrators who serve our communities. This is, this is the bold and brave leadership that our students, faculty, and staff deserve. Thank you for providing that leadership.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Angela Chivari for the record, and I'm representing the District Academic Senate. Uh, first of all, I am very excited to announce that the District Academic Senate is organizing a summit on artificial intelligence on February, I'm sorry, Friday, August 22nd. Uh, the theme of the summit is going to be AI in Higher Education, Ethics, Engagement, and Impact in the Age of Generative Intelligence. Uh, this is going to be a virtual event, and it will explore the rapidly evolving role of generative AI in education and the need to prepare faculty, students, and administrators in, uh, for the many opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. The keynote speaker for this event will be Dr. Allison Gergenis, who is a librarian and technology innovation specialist from the San Diego Community College District. Uh, her presentation is going to focus on AI literacy, ethics, and the road ahead. Uh, this presentation will be followed by a panel of AI practitioners, including faculty, administrators, and students, um, to talk about their concerns, how they're using AI, what are their concerns, what are the challenges they see ahead. Um, I, and then we'll have two sessions of breakouts designed to help educators navigate this rapidly changing landscape. Uh, the event is being cosponsored by the LA Regional Consortium, so we are actually including, uh, initially it was going to be an LACC D event, but we're including the 19 LA Region Colleges, so we're very excited about this. Uh, it's going to be held via Zoom, uh, you know, open to all LACC D employees and trustees, of course, uh, and eligible for Flex credit. Um, so we're very excited about this event, so I, I just want to, um, advertise this, and we have, uh, close to 300 people who have registered already, and we expect to have a lot more, so, um, I'm, I'm pleased to announce this. Uh, the other thing I wanted to do is express my support for your resolutions today, uh, in particular the one on Labor Day, uh, as well as the one on the identification of federal agents. Uh, and again, I want to echo the sentiments expressed earlier. Uh, it's hard to believe that we are in a reality where we actually have to state that federal agents, you know, should not be able to come on, on a campus without identifying themselves and just pick up people, uh, based on the color of their skin or the language that they speak. So as we careen, unfortunately, teetering toward a fascist totalitarian reality uh, that none of us, I think, could have imagined, uh, a few months ago, I want to stress the importance of the press and a free press in, in maintaining democracy. And that's why, um, you know, we, you know, we've seen, you know, the headlines of how the press is under attack at the national level. So I'm really saddened to see that something similar is happening here in our district. We have an award-winning newspaper, a student newspaper, and meeting after meeting, we hear about how the, the newspaper, you know, i- is being undermined. And I think that, that, you know, we, as a district, we can really do better. Um, so I just encourage us to support our student journalists and our journalism programs to the best of our capabilities. Uh, finally, I just wanted to say, uh, I want to echo the concerns about process uh, with the presidential evaluations. Um, I know, and I want to acknowledge the huge amount of work that is being done to clean up some of the issues in HR. So, um, we understand that, but I do think that we need to follow process and set an example for everyone involved, so thank you. And, uh, and my colleague, uh, Jeff is going to add a few comments, thank you.
Jeffrey Hernandez, uh, first, I present to District Academic Senate. Uh, first off, I, I want to commend, um, each and every one of you, uh, for hitting in with a very interesting, uh, discussion on your goals. I, I, I found it captivating, it was very difficult, uh, for me, because I also was navigating other meetings at the same time, but I want to thank you. I also wanted to draw your attention to the EO, um, certification form, and I have to tell you that, uh, we can do better, and I hope that, that we will, uh, do better. Um, and then, uh, the new leadership we have, um, because uh, there is a lot in there that I think is more aspirational, and really, uh, we don't have, um, some sort of information sharing that I think we want to aspire to with, um, the stakeholders, including, uh, faculty who sit on the EO Plan Committee. Um, you know, I, I, I think there is a lot of opportunity, and particularly in these times when we're really struggling, right, to defend the basics of equal employment opportunity. Uh, it's important that we make full use of it, so I just want to draw your attention to that and, uh, to keep your eye on that. Uh, with your careful attention, I, I know good things will come. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Andrea Edwards, AFT 1521, a president to our Board trustee, President Ino, to the trustees, our chancellor, uh, and to AFT members watching. Um, yeah, so AFT supports the resolutions, uh, under item G, um, and we're really excited, and sitting on the CFT, our State Executive Council, allows us all to look at very collaborative ways in protesting civil disobedience. Uh, it really goes back to the core concept of what unionism is, and it's an action. It's really not just saying I believe in something without showing, uh, physical, uh, examples of how you stand up for something, whether it's putting signs on our doors, employees only. So we would love to kind of really share some of those very impactful things we're learning on a state level, really, to protect our students. Um, and it's heartbreaking because you don't think it's going to happen to your friends. Uh, but when it happens to your neighbor, and you have your sister calling crying because she, that's become her family, right? And they're trying to hide the kids in her house. Uh, it really breaks your heart, because then you, you're seeing it not just from the news or watching a protest. It, it, they, they took who she calls her family from her next-door neighbors, who have been there for 15 years. Um, who tried to finish their immigration status, and I think there's tracking and stalking people, so we really do have to understand that this is not a far-off thing, it's right next door. Um, and it really requires us to really show more action and how we do these things on our campuses. Um, I would also like to say, uh, we do support the SRP, we're very excited about it, and we honor people who've given their time and their expertise and their livelihoods to push the mission of Los Angeles Community College District. Uh, to wrap it up, it really is just about, um, we understand the rationale and why, and it's beautiful. I think what we're hoping for is that we look at this workload. We know that we want backfill for a while, because that's the whole point of SRP, is to make sure we can make the adjustments. Uh, but honoring people, um, not increasing the workload or expectation, not finding ways of not really having the work or charts show that the staffing is down and expecting more from people, and then putting on their performance evaluation that they're not meeting certain metrics. Unlike everybody else, we don't get to fill out a self-survey about what we think we did great. There's columns A, B, and C, you're below standard, right? That goes on your file for three years, and that stops you from employment opportunities. It stops you from reinstatement, so it's detrimental when we have those things with no consideration for a whole person approach of how we operate. Everyone's here to support the mission. I love students, I come from a long line. I'm not the first, not the second, not the third college graduate, and everyone, ironically, are in education, all right? So this is a, a born passion. Uh, we here work with students who, if you remember, come from an academic disparity and a chasm. We know our Black and Brown students and disadvantaged populations, which we inherit as a community college, are coming in behind their counterparts. And when we fail to understand that we're serving these students and classified or directly student-facing, when you're punishing people who are trying to take on the workload, because our students aren't going to change, because our ratios and staffing does. So we will really be enforcing Article III, which is talking about harassment, which is non-sexual non-collegiality, because we're humans, right? So you don't want to harass people who are trying to work to meet the missions and the goals of this college while we know we have to really scale back, uh, involuntary transfers. It's not that we can't, it's just about do it in order, see if they're volunteers first. We'll see a lot of that now, because you don't have enough people in place, so you may have to start to implement that, but just do it right, give people an opportunity. Um, and really, I think the last thing I would like to talk about is, um, I think that's it. The Labor Day, we, we stand up, we'll be marching, we'll be out tabling. It really goes back to the concept of what unionism is, working in tandem with our district that we, I, we love. I tell my, uh, my team members all the time, "Thank you, guys. Our benefits, our job pay, I'm not going to be bad, I listed, I, we love y'all." But I think, again, it's really working in collaboration, and again, uh, we honor this district, we honor the missions, and so thank you so much. And we appreciate it, but we will be enforcing that heavily, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor, my name is Krista Ozan. I represent the SCAU Local 99. Um, I first want to say that we also support the, um, SRP incentive. Um, I would like to begin by expressing, um, my gratitude to the district for implementing an additional SRP incentive, uh, from which qualified district employees may benefit. But I also wish to highlight that some campuses have not yet, uh, fully recovered from the impact of the previous two SRPs. And while I recognize, uh, the district goal is to, uh, save costs, um, you know, where possible, these efforts should, should not come at the expense of the, uh, employees' well-being. And currently, there are employees performing multiple roles and working outside their official classification to ensure the continued operations of the district. Many positions within maintenance and operations remain on, on field, resulting in challenges for campuses attempting, uh, to maintain essential services due to the lack of, uh, backfill positions. So I ask this board that, uh, that you take that in, um, consideration. Also, I would like to address today's resolution with pertains to the celebration of Labor Day. In preparing my remarks, I was mindful to, to present my thoughts constructively while respectively, uh, raising certain concerns. Today, I proudly wear my Local 99 Union Shirt to demonstrate my recognition of this resolution, which holds significant personal value to me. I appreciate the meaning and purpose behind Labor Day. But it's important, uh, to consider whether the district and board fully recognize the significance of, of Labor Day. But it's important, uh, to consider whether the district and board fully recognize the significance of, of Labor Day. I would like to respectfully ask how the district can genuinely recognize Labor Day as a resolution to honor the contributions and challenges of working-class individuals when many, uh, district employees are constantly treated with, um, treated unprofessionally within a district. A significant number of district employees have reported, reported experiencing bullying, harassment, physical assaults, retaliation, discrimination, dis- disrespect in the workplace. And the district is frequently involved in legal actions concerning allegations of, um, discrimination, harassment, and unfair labor charges. Additionally, there has been an increase in employees taking stress leave due to workplace, uh, conditions. Given these ongoing challenges of the district decision to recognize Labor Day highlights the need for further reflection on the current work environment. It is concerning to note how few employees were recognized last month considering the district employ- considering that the district employs approximately ten thousand individuals. Many members of the leadership team did not recognize the valuable contributions of their team members who consistently, consistently demonstrate dedication and supporting the district. Meanwhile, there is an emphasis on acknowledging Labor Day. This situation raises questions about leadership priorities regarding employee recognition. Actions speak volumes. If the district and board are dedicated to recognizing the history and contributions of working-class individuals and the la- labor movement, movement, these values will be reflected in their actions. Employees will not encounter persistent issues related to mistreatment. Rather, there would be comprehens- comprehensive and effective policies to address workplace bullying and harassment, ensure, um, e- equitable treatment for all staff and hold district leader, leaders accountable for upholding these standards. If the district, uh, prior- prioritize these initiatives, it may be possible to reallocate expenses currently associated with preventable litigations to areas that would better serve the district needs. Lastly, I would like to bring a concern to the board regarding the handling of Loca ninety-nine by Eli- by ELR, um, in cases involving workplace violence and assaults, particularly with respect to paid administrative leave. Recently, two separate incidents were reported in which supervisors were alleged to have verbally and physically assaulted Loca ninety-nine members. Throughout my employment with the district, it has been standard practice for both parties involved in matters such as workplace violence to be placed on paid administrative leave pending the outcome of, of an investigation. However, this protocol was not followed in this, in the situation described. In one instance, the supervisor accused of being the aggressor was permitted to con- continue working while our member was placed on paid administrative leave. In another case, the supervisor was allowed to remain in their position while the employee, who expressed concerns of their safe, safety, was instructed to use sick leave if they didn't, if they did not feel comfortable, uh, being at work. And, you know, so, you know, this matter warrants attention due to observed inconsistencies and potential bias from ELR in the current paid administrative leave, uh, procedure. So we respectfully request that the board conduct, conduct a thorough review of relevant policies and procedures with the goal of establishing and implementing a consistent standard for paid administrative leave throughout the district. And then lastly, um, I just wanna give a shout out to our, uh, our sheriff deputies. Uh, they came out and, um, visit, you know, they came out and spoke to our, um, SEU, SEU Local ninety-nine leadership. We had a wonderful dialogue. Uh, we talked about safety issues and, you know, how, you know, how it impacts our members. And, uh, I just wanna say that I thank them and I look forward to having more of these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next item is reports from the board. Student trustee Francis, um, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that you chaired on July eleventh?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, um, last, oh, sorry, last month, yes. Uh, my first meeting went very, very well. Um, I had a full board. It was only one president that wasn't president due to she is an international student. Um, they were very excited to see me. Um, they were very excited to get started as well. My main goal that I went over is when, um, I went over briefly meetings of what we talked about on the district level, but I know four of them got canceled last month. Only one was there, um, which was, um, the academic. So I did a briefly over, um, over that to my presidents so they understand what policy are in place, what policy we're working towards, what is being amended. Um, my first meeting was mainly introducing them what a president is, what the qualification looks like, how to act like in, um, um, certain rooms, how to navigate, um, um, decision-making when it comes to problem-solving, when it comes to talking to, um, managing their team as being a president and then also managing them being a president inside of, um, administration roles. When they're going to talk with the president of the college itself, monthly meetings, or if they're in other committees within their, on their campus itself, how does that look like? What does that leader look like? How to show up as a leader? So, um, we also had went over, I taught them how to, uh, network. Don't burn any bridges that you haven't started. Um, I also went over, um, navigating negativity, um, when people are coming into your ear about the negativity, um, how to be a listener and be very careful of when, when you're speaking. Um, let them know how to take their time and not only take their time to, um, how to advocate for themselves of what that looks like and what they want and how to get down to nitty-gritty, uh, exactly of what that vision looked like so we can implement that. I also wanted to make sure that they knew that as a student trustee, I have that time to focus on the district needs. Which means I need my presidents to be focused on my campuses grounds. Um, I don't want to mix and mingle all of our, um, hard-working hands. Um, I want, um, things really cohesive and easy. So their main idea is making sure that they're focusing on their campus levels grounds of making sure. Um, I told them, uh, I will be moving our SAC meetings out to, uh, the campuses. So our, um, everybody can see each other's campuses and get to know each other's students and network of what we, um, may have situated at another campus that's not situated at another campus. Um, my pipeline is to make sure that all of our nine sister campuses are, um, working around the, the same benefits and the same resources that's offered. Um, our, our schools should not be up and down crazy of what's offered, not offered. It should be the same across all platforms if we're, if we're underneath one, one contract, right? So it's making sure of I'm getting my data from the grounds up to give you guys so we can implement, um, these changes correctly that actually has an effect. Um, and then I also, um, went over, we're having a president's, um, retreat. I think it's very important that my presidents understand what it is to be a president and to be, making sure that they're really are ready for this academic year. Um, you guys are also welcome. Um, I will send an email as well. My student trustee email just came about end, so I do apologize for, you haven't heard from me. You probably haven't because I haven't reached out to any of you guys. I have my business cards with me today that also came in, so I will be handing out as well. So like moving forward, you will be hearing me more, seeing me more. This past month, I've been working closely with Southwest here and, um, Harvard College, making sure that their governments and their websites align. Our website is one of our biggest things, why our traction is not coming into. If I go on you guys' website, you have a lot of outdated information. I'm calling numbers, not even the right office. So that is very important. Especially when we're gonna out here out branding and we're bringing in these sponsorships, they're using, they're utilizing our website to contact us. So it's very important that the information on your website is up to date with the familiar faces and, and the familiar, uh, information that's needed. Um, and then I have my upcoming, um, meeting this Friday as well. So next month, I'll give you more great things to talk about as well. But so far, my role is to make sure that as a person, as me, can give back. You know, all we needed was, you know, me being a president, I just wanted somebody to teach me how to be a leader. And I gotten that through my connections and I'm very blessed to have my peers that see me grow from nothing to something. And me being this position, I have an opportunity now to grow nine more leaders. So I'm very excited about that and we're gonna see what that takes off from that and throughout the academic year. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot and, and we're very grateful for all this.
Please. Um, thank you. It sounds like you're doing really, really great work. Just a quick question. I, you put out an email to the trustees, but, and when I was board president, I attended all of the SAC meetings. I think that's sort of part of our portfolio or, uh, board president can delegate that if, um, if she wants. But is there a college president that comes regularly to the SAC meetings as well?
So no, we're having a problem getting a, a college president. Betsy's been working really hard on that, but, uh, I know last week we did have a speaker out. I wanna apologize. It was, um, Robert. I don't know if he's in a room today or not. He was there, but we don't have a, um, a actual lineup for that actual position as well to make sure we have a president speaking to, you know, our, uh, student presidents. So we do need that as well.
Okay. Well, I'll get you somebody appointed.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Um, next, I will summarize the proceedings of the Asian American Pacifica Desi American Advisory Committee that I chaired on, um, July twenty-fifth. So we kind of had an impromptu, um, additional meeting with the chancellor and I really appreciate him making the space and the time due to the recent, um, potential hate crime of one of our faculty members at ELAC College, um, Aki Mayahara. He was, um, riding his bike in Montebello and was, um, hit and then racial slurs were, um, said to him. And so we just wanted to hold space back in like, eh, early June, but there was a series of events and I think since then, we've had the ICE raids, um, and additional conflicts that are addressed, that are impacting our API community. And so it was really nice that we just kind of initially held space. I wanna say thank you to, um, President Perez, who came out. He responded immediately to the incident of his faculty member and sent out a messages about hate crimes and zero tolerance and things like that. So he gave us an update to what he was doing at his campus. Um, I also wanna say thank you to the sheriffs. Sergeant Kim also came and gave a really thorough presentation to us about how to report a hate crime, that hate crime incidents that have been happening, um, in our district and just to kinda give us an update to all of that. So that was really helpful. Um, the city of Montebello was to attend, but they weren't able to make it, but they, we have been working with them closely on our, um, legislative meetings and so they do, are aware of the issue and, and are addressing it in their cities. Um, and then also, we had, um, the Asian American Advancing Justice, um, Nathan Wong come to kinda give us an overview. So they're kinda like Chirla, um, for the API community. And so they also gave us an overview of services and things that they're doing. And so I think we are going to partner with them as well as, um, Andrea said something about CFT and AFT holding, hosting, um, intervention training. So, um, eh, eh, advancing just, Asian American Advancing Justice, they do bystander intervention trainings as well as know your rights trainings. And so I think that is something definitely that we as a district want to start hosting, um, or to equip ourselves and our students with knowing our rights and how to respond when things like, um, you know, ICE kidnappings and things like that are happening on our campus or in our campus community. I think they're just really good trainings. Um, and so basically, that was it. It was mainly to hold space. Um, and I think it, it was really well-attended, even though it was the end of July. Um, and so I really appreciate the chancellor's time and, and the presidents, a lot of them attended and the vice chancellors and in our campus community. So, um, we will continue to hold these meetings and just make sure we are out there, um, protecting, you know, each other and, and the other groups that are impacting, right? Because there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of things happening right now. So, thank you for that. Um, the next item, F-two, board travel authorizations. May I have a motion and a second on item F-two?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman?
Second.
Second by Henderson. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Not present. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Not present.
Right. Yes, 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 yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Veres, not present.
Absent ratification. May I have a motion and a second on item F-three?
So moved.
So moved by Henderson? Second by Eno. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Not present. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Veres, not present.
Resolutions. Resolutions to support supplementary retirement program. May I have a motion and a second on item G-one?
So moved.
So moved by Henderson?
Second.
Second by Vella. Roll call, please, Lupe.
Can we have discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo.
Great. Please, discussion.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to echo the concern and also praise of our bargaining unit. We do have to remember that. You know, we don't wanna take, uh, a playbook from what's going on right now in America where, you know, basically it's about, you know, who takes the most and, you know, always remember that these people worked really hard for us all these years with minimal increase in pay, you know, with hard work and dedication. So as people exit on the SERP program, I would really appreciate that we just don't treat it like a number, uh, you know, that we really get to understand that, you know, these are human beings that we really need to appreciate. And whatever those, uh, agreements we made with the bargaining units, uh, regarding this whole program, get honored. And, you know, I know that we have very competent, um, staff with us, uh, and, you know, looking forward to the work of, of all of our cabinet and new chancellor as you lead this program. Thank you.
Please. Trustee Hoffman. Um, thank you, um, trustee Vella. Those were great comments. I appreciate the comments that you just made. I also wanna address the issue of, you know, we, we had a SERP, what, when was the last one? A few years ago, and I'm pretty confident that we probably have not even replaced classified employees that retired during that period. And by and large, when you offer a SERP, you usually get a lot of classified employees that want and then, and they should, um, take advantage of it, but that really leaves our classified brothers and sisters in a very tough and tight spot. And so I just wanna go on record by saying, we cannot make people work harder and more and longer and take on extra responsibilities if we're not compensating them adequately. And we need to be very realistic about our needs because my fear and is that these positions, we already have positions that weren't replaced and we're gonna have on top of that more positions that aren't replaced. And so the folks that are left are really doing a whole lot more with a whole lot less. And so we need to just keep in mind balance. I mean, the same is gonna happen in the Teamsters group because if we lose, you know, a bunch of deans, who then is gonna take on those responsibilities? Um, and so I just really wanna make sure that we're thinking through this very carefully and mindfully. Um, because I don't want these, you know, employees to, to suffer essentially. And I do wanna thank everybody for their service and it's really, it's a great opportunity and it's a wonderful benefit that we are able to offer long-time employees who may or may not have been thinking about retirement. And it certainly helps if you're thinking about, can I afford to retire? This is, this is a fabulous opportunity, but we really do need to make sure that the areas that need to be covered are covered and that we are actually saving because we're doing this as a cost savings, correct? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I made those comments and we, you know, we support all of our bargaining groups and we just wanna make sure that there aren't big holes left because that affects our students in the long run.
Absolutely. Any other comments on, on this item?
No.
Resolutions?
Um, I'll, I'll go back to the one that I'll say.
Resolutions one?
Um, yes, F-one.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, like Hoffman said, I was, um, I was looking over and this is just a couple of questions that, um, I have. You could just briefly answer all these too. I don't know. So my first question was, you know, how will this retirement incentive program affect student services and the academic program like Hoffman said? Um, will faculty or staff vacancies due to retirement disruption course, how would that really affect the student support? Also, um, what is the plan for replacing the retirement for, especially in the high-demand academic areas and student areas with that being said? Um, will the classified staff, faculty, and administration all be underneath equal terms as well? And then, um, the timeline for the, for, is there a timeline? Is this just a thing that just opened all year long? Or is there just an opt-in and opt-in out when to close it out? And then, um, where is this money coming from and how, how much does it cost? Like, are we actually saving or is this punishing from students moving forward? Like, where is this money coming from that are we, where this came about? And that, that was too many questions. Sorry. I can always.
I, I, I thought they were actually very, very good questions.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, no, no, don't apologize. Great questions, trustee Francis. So I think I got them all. Let me see if I answer them. First and foremost, how do, how do we pay for this? Uh, part of the, the plan is structure, uh, for us to have employees that have been here a long time on the highest end of our- employees that have been here a long time on the highest end of our salary to retire. Typically, they're replaced with newer, with employees that are on the front end of the salary. So there's a salary difference between replacements that allows us to generate some savings. The other part is that not everything gets hired right away. And I want to appreciate the points that were made by our labor groups and a commitment that I made that we're not going to leave any area decimated. But we, we do need to have a commitment of not replacing everything in the same year because quite frankly, there goes the savings, right? For the first year, our faculty, we're not expected to replace in the first year. We are expected to replace in the second year going forward. We have sufficient enough faculty in our ranks, both part-time and full-time, to be able to weather a one-year non-replacement plan. The second, on the classified side, we do plan to replace up to forty percent in the first year. Again, same rationale, we can replace everybody. But in the subsequent years, we do plan to bring back our classified staff. That means in some instances, though, where you might have, for example, a job where you only have one person that can do that job, we are going to replace immediately because in those instances, we don't have the ability not to do so, and we can't afford that. We have plans in place with our college presidents to be able to weather a year of some mitigated staff reduction, but at the priority will be student support services, financial aid, A and R, and all those things. If there's any particular area that is heavily impacted, I've given authority and will give authority to go ahead and replace. Right? Because that's ultimately the highest priority for us, those folks that are interfacing with our students first and foremost.
Right.
Did I get all your answers?
Yes, yes, you did.
Oh, timeline. Let me give you the timeline.
Yes.
So there are, there are two retirement dates. December 31st of 2025 will be the first timeline. June 30th of 2026 is the second. All employees that qualify for the retirement incentive will have the option to take the first or second retirement date. After that, it closes. And those that decide to retire will honor them, hopefully at a board meeting or an event, celebrate them. And, you know, they'll be able to retire. Did I get everything?
Yeah. Do you plan on having like any student voice involved in this? Like, I know we talked about, like you said, filling those gaps. And so maybe like looking back into students that are maybe like internships, looking to like to fill those roles up. So that way, like I said, cost of purchase goes a long way.
Yeah.
Intern versus a minor, that's already qualified. Now you have to bargain with the competition. You know, another way looking forward is that looking into our students to bring them back on to our campus to be that mentor mentee to the next cohort coming up.
Absolutely. I think that's an excellent idea. I think our president liaison to your committee, is that I want to say President Dorado, maybe? On your, you on the student SAC committee or, okay, we have to, we have to appoint somebody. But what I like, I was looking at Louis, my apologies. But we will get somebody there. Why don't we use that as an opportunity for discussions? And bringing those to all of our nine college presidents with your voice there?
Yes.
I, I think it's an absolutely great idea. And I mean, my goodness, just all the ideas you brought forth today. I really appreciate you thinking about this. I think what's most important here for all of us, quite frankly, is your voice. And making sure that we are not taking actions that adversely impact our students. So we'll be looking to you for those types of conversations. And we have the structure and the meeting committees to do so. But I appreciate the questions and look forward to working with you and your leadership as well.
Alright, thank you.
Can I make one more comment? Those are really great questions that like really had us thinking. Thank you. I also want to say sometimes, you know, a faculty member who's in a niche area or who's running a program on release time retire. So can I, I would just like to make the ask that if that happens, we don't reduce services or a student can't finish their program because the one faculty member teaching that particular class retired. So if we can just, if I can ask out of our faculty leaders, I know James, you're probably on top of it, but also of our college presidents, because oftentimes, you know, you might have a counselor running your Dream Resource Center or some other area, and that person retires and then, and then the services don't exist. And I want to just make sure that it's seamless for our students so that they're not held up in their educational journeys as well. So, thank you. And thank you so much for your questions.
Any other questions? Lupe, roll call, please.
We need a motion and a second.
Oh, no, I think we.
Oh, thank you. Chris reminded me.
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? And trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veris, not present.
Um, I was asked to go back to item F3, absence report ratification authorizations. I know we did vote on it, but there was a question that trustee.
Yes, I just have some clarification. My apologies for that one. I just have the clarification on the absence ratification authorizations. How is that process being determined if the absence from ill jury duty or hardship? And what is, is there a time limit on when trustees should be just online or in present? Is there like a, I know, like, you know, with me being the steward by the president, even if I was absent, I only had five times to be absent and that was it. So is there like, uh, any type of enforcement on that, making sure that, you know, officers are present, doing the job we need to be doing that you said you was going to be doing?
Yes, thank you for the question. Let me ask Deputy Chancellor Alva Lopez to address.
So we have a board policy that outlines how the board operates and the absence policies within that. So the board actually shapes that policy. And as you can see here, we follow a process. If somebody is absent and meets the qualifications, then the board actually votes to take action. So I'll, I'll share that policy. Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to item G2, resolution to celebrate Labor Day and on September 1st, 2025. May I have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman, second by Vella. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit. You know, I just really want us to reiterate, you know, as Chair of Public Affairs, we have seen unprecedented, unprecedented actions by the federal government to literally defund public school, literally, literally, you know, looking at deep cuts into not just programming, but potentially financial aid, just alone, taking our loans that our students take and transferring them to a department just for the sake of collecting money, for example. We have to understand that, you know, more than ever, when we look, our administration in particular, we have to start looking at our labor and bargaining units as a team player. We have to unite against the forces that are trying to dismantle the very fabric of this institution. Because without our bargaining units, without labor taking a stand, that, you know, we do need to get paid a little more because we do live in LA County. To compare us, we are a state that funds the rest of the country, but yet we're being criticized that we're, we're not removing, you know, DIA programs. That's all fine, but this time around, and I, I really implore to our, our chancellor and our administration and the people that dealing, are dealing with the bargaining units, that when we support people who work hard, who are saying, I deserve health benefits, I deserve the ability to be treated with respect, we are actually strengthening this local economy. We really are. What labor busting is about is about dismantling unity and making corporate profits better. You know, when no one brings an eye that the exiting CEO of American Airlines takes thirty-five million dollars and he's heard about it because he didn't take a hundred, like, you guys wake up. Like, and we're, we should not be complaining about SEIU 99 letting us know that they, they have to choose between paying a bill and feeding their children. And while the rest of us are earning good money, we should not forget, you guys. Like, enough is enough. Like, we have to really stand, even us that are making okay money, we have to step into the shoes of our members. Sometimes you don't all get to go to college. Sometimes we don't all have a bachelor's or a master's and make money. Sometimes we're come to a place where whether it's domestic violence or we're sons and children of immigrants, we didn't have the opportunity to sometimes, you know, match the salaries of our peers in this county. And we have to be, when the median home price is above a million dollars in LA County, when the rent is like four thousand dollars. So this, to me, and I really appreciate Chris's comments, Chris's, I want to take it further to like when us as the district, when we start to talk about in a couple of years negotiations and, you know, a year from now with SERP, with everything, let's really talk about also the fact that that we should not ever be ashamed of being a labor district. Because I'm tired, like, what are the, what are they trying to do to pin us against labor? You know, especially you administrators, you presidents, like, you guys were labor. Like, don't let people fool you. This is all a trap. We are being told to not deal with our bargaining units in a respectful manner, to not give people prevailing wage. You know, how many people out there are doing campaigns so that the construction sites don't now receive prevailing wage? Come on, there's dark forces out there, you guys. So I just wanted to take the time on this particular. I think, and by the way, every single one of you, of my colleagues, I know is going to not only work for this, but definitely hold this to heart. Because I know them and I know their heart personally, I really do. They are good people, my colleagues on the board. So anyway, I just wanted to just give us a little bit, you know, of that little flavor, right? And I'm learning as Chair of Ledge, like, how crazy it can be out there. But anyway, I just wanted to dedicate this to our bargaining units, this particular.
Thank you. Is it any, you know?
Thank you, thank you.
Please.
I was going to say, President Vella, no, I'm just kidding. With, with, with that speech, I would, you know, I'm going to nominate you and wherever we're going to have honor. Thank you very much. I'd like to add myself to that list up there. It should be, it should be seven trustees on that, on that list. So I echo everything that you just said. So if there's anyone that's missing here who would like to add their names to that list, I think trustee Henderson, you're not on that list.
I would love to add myself too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I just want to make one very brief comment, and thank you for that. Very impassioned. I, I can't follow that. But you did allude to Ms. Ozan, who comes to every single board meeting with the same message, chancellor. So can we, between this board meeting and next board meeting, can you please meet with SEIU 99? And maybe do some kind of, I don't know if it's mediation, I don't know if it's coming up with some kind of an agreement. But clearly, there are some issues in that bargaining unit because Chris comes month after month, and the message hasn't changed. And I think we need to see some change. And so it must be hard to sit here. I just want to acknowledge that, hearing how much we support labor and how much we support all of you. When you probably are sitting there feeling unsupported. And so I just want you to know that we support you. We support SEIU 99. And we want to make sure that this issue is resolved. And so chancellor, we're going to look to you because that's your strength and you're so good at this, to help us bring them along. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. Just one more little comment. I want to say that I don't want this to be us against them. I am very proud of our college presidents, of our administration, and how they've been navigating these horrific potential policies. Like, are you kidding me? It's been really crazy, especially when ICE was around East LA College during the graduation. I mean, that was tough on the psyche. I'm just going to say. Seeing our parents in the bleachers. And, you know, I know Monte was there and it was just like, it was scary. And, you know, I was, we're seeing, you know, that graduation and we're just like, they're literally down the street on Sesam Tides, like hanging out. It was just really tough. So, you know, I wanted, the point of this whole thing is for us to definitely see labor as an ally to the final goal. Especially for the college presidents that are out there managing your own towns. I mean, you guys have huge responsibilities. So that's another piece of it. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, you know, one, one final comment. I just want to say, in terms of our great SEIU representative, we'll call it every month, please come back and give us that message. We need to hear it every single month. And it never, it's always new. Thank you.
And I think it's very important that on a district level, you know, sharing fairness treatment against all employees should be the number, one hundred, ten percent, number one thing. Especially, you know, it's a saying, you know, treat your janitors how you treat the CEO, right? That's exactly what I'm talking about, our firsthand employees that, part-time employees positions along with our, our custodian, if we have cafeterias, even those. Or even our classified support, you know, our off-hand springs, right? Making sure they get noticed for, like they're saying, a card goes a long way, a smiley face goes a long way, a sticker goes a long way. Some of the things we grew up in, 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 in early child, early childhood school, what kept us the motivation going was the, was the, I want to, I don't want to say guess, what's the acknowledgement, what's the, here, you're doing the right thing, you're on the right track. If you had a bad day, don't forget your purpose or why, right? So I, I think it's very great we're having this conversation just to remind you guys that, you know, like you said, we're all human. But again, doing what we're going through, we can't also forget that the great work that you guys are doing to even sustain children that is not yours, right? So to abstain that and have the patience and to want to treat that and be that mentor for these mentees, like, yes, the help of the district does play a huge role in that because it's, it's, it's letting you know you're, you're doing the right thing. And while you wake up every day, and while you come to these monthly meetings, and why you, and why, and why, and why, right? So I do agree. And I'm hoping to see the district show that appreciation to you guys as faculties, as administrations, you know, janitors, whatever platform you play of LACCD. I want to make sure you guys are also recognized as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, well said by all of my colleagues. And I'm very proud to sit up here. So with that, Lupe, roll call, please.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veris, not present.
Thank you.
Fine. Okay, I will move on to item G3, the resolution to ensuring accountability, transparency and identification of federal officials on the LACCD campuses. I would like to recognize trustee Bueno and just say thank you for his leadership in helping author this. May I have a motion and a second on the item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bueno, second by trustee Henderson. Discussion?
Um, may I begin?
Please.
Okay. One, I, I want to invite all my colleagues who are not on their listed. If they wish to be listed, I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to do so at this time.
Yes, please.
Is there any other trustee that would like to be listed?
Yes.
Let, let me just say, this was a few of the speakers mentioned this resolution, and this session is being recorded, and I'm glad it's being recorded. This, this resolution is a tragedy. The fact that it has to occur is, is something that, that my generation, that we thought we did not have to do, that we did not have to have masked agents or individuals than afraid of kidnapping. When Russia attacked Crimea, 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 they sent in, I remember, it was agents, Russian agents that did not have identifying information, and they called them the Little Green Men. Because they did not admit that they were part of Russian military forces. The fact that we're in Los Angeles and we have the federal government sending in individuals that are not identified, wearing masks, we're at a place that, yes, a lot of us know is very bad, but I don't think we really truly understand how bad it is and how bad it truly will get. ICE has an additional seventy or a hundred billion, add another hill, a hundred billion. They're going to have the ability to hire so many agents. This morning, you had a Trojan horse of source ICE agents showing up in a van and just opening up the door and just, and just kind of taking folks. So as a Los Angeles Community College District, us saying to, to the federal government and to society, do process, identify yourself, concept of Fourth Amendment, right? Concept of Fourth Amendment rights. These are not complicated and radical things that we need to say. But to all of our thousands of employees and our hundreds of thousands of students, it is important for us to take a stand and to literally say it. And that's what this resolution is about. Um, Chancellor, I, I am requesting, and our, and from our media folks, if you could put, please put this resolution and all the trustees who signed on to the resolution on our, on our website. Because it's going to be important that other community colleges know or take, use this as an example. Others, LA County, um, LAPD, through the police, police commission have identified non-identified police agents as a massive problem. So I just wanted to lay the context that of, of what this was about, that there is extreme meaning behind, um, this, this resolution. And it is meant to guide and for everyone to understand that your elected body to this entity, the Los Angeles Community College District, is representing the public's interest with this resolution.
Any further comments by your board colleagues?
I just want to thank trustee Bueno for bringing that forward.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And, and thank you for, for, for the support of those who are present.
Yeah.
I just had a quick question. Um, so, um, with this resolution, would these, would these, um, personnel be trained in the progress of how to respond and how to report? Um, and how to handle this situation when they're actually contacted by ICE? Let them know able to give off, um, a student wants to come up to them and be like, hey, I, I think I just saw ICE, or hey, somebody just approached me, like, are they trained to respond to that, to give them the advice to, um, make sure the students is able to protect themselves and able to walk the campus safely as well?
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for the great question. The answer is yes. Um, six, seven months ago, we instituted an actual protocol. Um, trustee Francis, in the event that an ICE agent comes on campus. Um, so we have, uh, a protocol where, uh, any agent that comes on campus will be directed to the president's office. Uh, they need to be there with a federal warrant or a federal subpoena, which will be verified by the Office of General Counsel, uh, working very closely with their office as well as mine, uh, to make sure that it is a legit, uh, you know, either subpoena and/or a warrant for a particular individual. We are not interested in, uh, clearly having raids on campus. We've been fortunate that that has not taken place. We're also working very closely with their sheriff's office. They're aware that we're vigilant on any particular activity associated with ICE, um, raids. Uh, we've had a couple of campuses, had some activity across from the campus. And I'm very proud to say that the sheriff's office immediately engaged them in a conversation around why they were there and the purpose. So, uh, those, uh, protocols are in place and we will, we remain very vigilant. Uh, we're in constant communication. And when there is something of that nature, we get calls immediately to intervene. So that's in place. And then lastly, uh, we've disseminated the red cards, know your rights to all of our students and employees so that we're in the event that one of them is detained, um, and, uh, for, for example, undocumented student, they know what their rights are in terms of, uh, being able to respond or not to that federal agent.
Okay, so is there a particular person on campus itself that is, um, qualified in order to approach that person? So let's say, for instance, right, I'm a student on, I'm a student on campus, I'm getting harassed by particular ICE. Who am I running to first? Am I, am I running to the president's office? Am I running to the sheriff's? Am I running to a faculty? Like, who in that, who's trained for me to help me?
Well, we've, again, communicated with the sheriff's office. Uh, and we've said, if, if you, if there is a law enforcement or a federal agent on campus, uh, we're recommending, uh, as an intervention would be the sheriff's office. Uh, any administrator, however, that you see, uh, if the sheriff's is not available, would be able to assist because our presidents have communicated with their vice president what the protocols are, as well as their deans and supervisors. So it's not one person. Uh, student trustee Francis is, um, many folks on campus. And again, on addition to that, the sheriff's office.
Great, great, great.
I think, um, just to add to that as well, I think that is also, you know, in our retreat earlier, um, trustee Bonner's express, expressed, um, interest and urgency, you know, as, as we are dealing with these things because they're changing, right? Almost on a daily, the tactics, the, the way that they're, these people are approaching, right, our, our communities. And so, and it's good that labor is, you know, we're honoring labor today because they are an integral component in a lot of the trainings that are happening right now. Um, the LA Federation of Labor just held a nonviolent training, action training, as well as, um, I know CFT is doing a lot of know your rights trainings. And then, like I had mentioned earlier, we're gonna collaborate with Asian American Advancing Justice, who are interested in doing, um, know, know your rights and nonviolent or bystander intervention trainings. And so, and I know Chirla and a lot of, a lot of organizations want to be able to equip us with the correct tools, um, to keep ourselves safe, um, and know our rights as we potentially intervene in some of these situations to protect the more, more vulnerable students or just campus community, right? Um, and so I think we're all active, I, I mean, we had to all be kind of responsible at this point to be informed. Um, and so hopefully we will implement, you know, more trainings, um, to whole, whole campus-wide, district-wide, whatever necessary, I think. It's all hands on deck. So good questions, yeah. We need to really implement a lot of the, the things that I like, I think a lot of folks are, are learning right now.
And I like how you said about the labor. Um, I'm hoping you guys do like some labor studies or like some labor history, some work panels, you know, involve the students, because you know, as a student myself, I didn't know labor, Labor Day was deeper than what it was. I just thought we were celebrating a holiday. So you mean to tell me labor is about rights and equity? Is it, I didn't know that, right? So that needs, if I don't know that, I know my students don't know that, right? And I'm not talking about for the ones that do. But, um, I think that's very important that you guys understand that as well, of, you know, when you're, when you're doing this, right? Think about like, the student don't know, we don't know. It's, it's, it's not taught in school for us. So we're, we're looking for that from your peers, you guys, all the real education. You know, anything past the early two thousands has been wiped from us. So we literally depend on you guys. So, you know, always be free to push down any knowledge or possible leaves. Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Hoffman, did you?
I mean, I was just gonna say that offices, uh, employee offices are not public spaces. And so you can tell your students if they are scared and, because you just said, what do I do? Do I run to the president's office? You know, anyone's office who's close by, um, would be a safe space. And I'm sure our employees know that, that those offices are not public spaces. And we should have signs that say, actually, employees only, but that could mean also, you know, students, it's just not for the public. Um, so you can, that's where I would go, to the nearest person's office or private space. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so any further discussion on the resolution? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Just, thank you. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hernandez? Not present. Trustee Hoffman?
Yep.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vela is not present.
Yes, you can tap my yes button.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Um, the fourth final resolution, the district academic employee retirement, may I have a motion and a second on item G four?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Henderson? Second by trustee Ino. Further any discussion? I mean, just mainly forty-eight years, thirty-five years, thirty-three, it's, this is amazing. Um, I think that's. Thank you for all, all of you that are, hopefully, I like to call it graduation rather than retirement, but I hope you're you're enjoying it or will enjoy it very soon. Um, any other discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Vela is not present.
We will now do, um, item H, report from the chancellor, and I will now turn it over to the chancellor.
Thank you so much, uh, for presenting, Ino. Uh, on the board agenda today, there's two matters that the board will be voting on. And we wanted to provide you, uh, background information and a report on both of these items. So if you can go to the second slide, please. So, uh, we're gonna get a presentation on the EEO plan that was alluded to earlier. Um, give you some background information on that so that you can have, be well informed before you vote. We also have an update from the sheriffs, contracts before the board today for consideration. And we'll have that be, uh, the second presentation. So I'm gonna turn the floor over now to Deputy Chancellor Alva Lopez, uh, for the first item on the EEO annual plan.
Good afternoon. I'm going to be calling up, uh, Kyra Nielsen and Cody Hunt from ODAIA. Um, our fearless leader of ODAIA is currently on vacation. I believe she's in the Nile. Um, so we have her team here to report out on the equal opportunities certification form that we're required to submit on an annual basis to the state chancellor.
Hello, I'm Cody Hunt. I am a senior compliance investigator at the district ODAIA office. Uh, nice to see everyone today, chancellor, I'm on the board. What I wanted to do was give you a little bit of information on what the certification is, uh, that the board is being requested to sign off on. So this is an annual certification that, uh, the chancellor, state chancellor's office has been requiring since twenty twenty-four. Uh, this runs on a, uh, yearly, uh, basis and then on a three-year basis. So every year, there is a review. Every three years, they ask us to do a full revision. So this year is just a review. Um, basically, uh, the form's gonna include this information that's on the slide here and needs to be submitted. And they requested that basically to make sure that districts are continuing to acquire the data on a yearly basis. So what it's gonna include, if I get to the next slide. Thank you. It's the sixth section. Kind of the meat of this is gonna be, uh, section B, which is the collection and analysis of recruitment, retention, and longitudinal data, which is included. And that's tracked, uh, year to year. And then for the three-year plan, we can go back and look at that and base sort of the, uh, any actions we want to take or the implementation of any policies that would influence that. Next slide. So that data, uh, is reflected on this slide. Um, and you'll notice that, uh, there have been changes tracked over the last three years here. Um, those are actually, um, commensurate kind of with the shifting demographics in the area also. Um, what we're looking for here, just in general, is often a point eight ratio between our employment statistics and the workforce. Currently, and this is just, um, kind of a cursory analysis, uh, it looks like we're within the point eight threshold, above point eight for all of these categories here. So, uh, we're in good shape at this point. Again, uh, changes, uh, are something that will be addressed in the revised plan, which will be put together next year. And the next slide. This is the breakdown briefly for, um, sex and gender. Again, you can see the changes over the, uh, the past three years here. Uh, again, this is, uh, fairly commensurate with the workforce in the space also. Finally, we would have slide six. We also track disability status, uh, in the report. And you can see the numbers have been increasing also with, uh, number of employees in disabilities. And that's the basics of the report. Um, the information that's summarized that we sent to the chancellor's office, they don't necessarily do a comprehensive review of everybody. They reserve the right to review any specific reports. And this year, they've asked, though, that it be submitted by September first. They changed the deadline, uh, moved it up on us. But, uh, all the information is contained in the basic form. Uh, it's been presented to you. So I'm happy to take any questions that I can answer.
Sure. Trustee Henderson and then trustee Francis.
Thank you for that. How intentional are we in terms of, of our hiring of people with different abilities?
Yeah, um, as you can see in the numbers here, it's actually been increasing the disability, um, and that is self-reported. So employees have the option to report or not. Um, you know, it's on them. Uh, and our data is only as good as that is. I don't particularly, um, I admit, I wasn't here for the last three-year plan. So that predates me and all the staff in our ODAIA office, I think. I think, um, the director started a couple of years, or a couple of months before me in twenty twenty-three. Um, so did Ms. Nielsen and the rest of the, the people that we brought on. So that's definitely something, um, we can look at for the revised plan. I think it's important as well. Uh, but, uh, we can earmark that, um, going forward.
Thank you.
Trustee Francis? No.
No, no comments.
Alna? Oh, no. Oh, yes.
I, I do. So again, what, what, you're asking us to vote, a vote on when or what, what are we, what are we gonna do here?
It's a certification. So it's just to say that, yes, here are the numbers that we have tracked, and we are providing them to the, uh, state chancellor's office.
Are we vote on, on that today or?
Uh, yes. So trustee Bueno, this is, uh, it's a three-year plan, and ideally we certify. So all you're doing today is certifying the existing plan.
You know, it, it's just, I, 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 I listened, I heard the presentation, uh, I think a few weeks ago, and, and I heard our self-certifying process. And I, I'm gonna vote against it and, and because I'm not comfortable with the presentation I heard a few months ago with regard to whether the certifications actually certify it. I understand what we're, what we're doing, but at, at this point, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it.
I'm, I wasn't part of the presentation, or I'm not sure which presentation we were referring to.
That's.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Trustees, now we have a brief presentation from our safety and security services department. Uh, we have Leonard McCray coming up, um, from our internal office at the ESC. Lieutenant Duba Gonzalez and Captain Israel Renteria from the sheriff's department. Um, just so you know, this is item W seven, um, that we'll be reviewing later. So have Director McCray get us started.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board and chancellor. Okay, thank you. Uh, so, uh, what I'd like to start with, uh, next slide, please, uh, is just, uh, some background overview of safety and security services. So, uh, we have oversight of the contract, uh, primarily for the purpose of compliance. Uh, and we also work, uh, together hand in hand to address any issues that, uh, may come up relative to safety and security. Uh, we also, uh, implement the district's emergency operations plan, uh, and also do training and exercises, uh, to facilitate the implementation of those plans, uh, at the college level. The safety and security oversight committee, uh, we have oversight, we actually chair that committee. Uh, that's a meeting that's, uh, typically held the second Friday of every month. Uh, it's open to the public. The agendas and meeting minutes are posted on board docs. Uh, and we encourage folks to come out to that. We provide updates. Uh, the sheriff's monthly report is discussed there. Uh, build security projects are discussed there. Any initiatives or efforts that come out of, uh, uh, safety, security services relative to emergency management. Uh, and we also have, uh, our environmental health and safety programs as well, uh, that, uh, we have responsibility for safety and security services and are also discussed there. For the sheriff's contract, uh, as you know, was, um, approved by this board, June ninth of, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's a, a five-year, uh, agreement, uh, and the security services, uh, district-wide funded through the unrestricted, uh, general fund. And so the contract, again, is a five-year contract. Uh, it was adopted by the board of supervisors on June twenty-eighth and took effect July one of twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's a base agreement and then three appendices, uh, that also make up the entire agreement. The three appendices, A, B, and C, we have A, which is the services to be provided by the sheriff under the agreement. Uh, appendix B is the staffing levels that addresses the minimum staffing, uh, by campus. Uh, and then we have the, uh, appendix C, which is the five seventy-five. And so that is in essence the, uh, invoice, so to speak. It, uh, it, uh, details the actual, uh, cost of all of the items that make up the contract. And so some of the things that, uh, that are actually, uh, done some samples of those services. Uh, and I, and I want to point out that a major component or feature in this contract was that the sheriffs engage in, uh, campus community-based policing. And so these are just a few, not all of the things that are actually done, uh, to that end. Uh, so we have monthly meetings with safety and security services team. So we have monthly meetings with safety and security services team. And so there's a formal meeting held every month. But what I'd like to point out is that I'm actually co-located with captain and lieutenant and his administrative team. And we talk daily. We even, we have each other's cell phone numbers. We talk after hours on weekends whenever a need arises. And so in addition to that standing monthly meeting, we're in constant contact addressing issues that may come up throughout the district. So the monthly reports shared at the SSOC, as I mentioned. And again, those, those reports detail the sheriff's efforts throughout the district. And there's also, and I'll just mention this, there's also an annual report that's done every year as well. They hold events on our campuses, coffee with the cop. That's actually an opportunity for our sheriff's folks to go and talk one-on-one with our students and faculty and staff. It, it, it helps to demonstrate that human side of who they are. And it's important that they understand that these folks are there on the campus. They're human, they're, they're family members, their fathers, uncles, sons, daughters, and so they're no different. And I think that's important. It helps to kind of break down some of those barriers that we traditionally have when you talk about law enforcement in the community. Our mental health evaluation team meetings, and so typically our, it's called a met deputy. They work with the big teams on the individual campuses. They also provide training for those, those teams as well. We have training and support for active shooters. They're always heavily involved in any efforts that we have on our campuses with respect to active shooter training, whether it be tabletop exercises or actual movement exercises. They attend campus meetings as requested, whether it's web meetings or any staff meetings that they're asked to come to and actually provide input or information. As was mentioned earlier, one of the labor unions asked that they come out and, and share some information with them and they gladly went out and facilitated that. They maintain a website and that website provides information on a host of issues and matters. But in addition to that, they also provide information there with respect to the sheriff's department's posture on immigration enforcement. That's information is there. So that's an important website for folks to, to know that's, that it's there and to take advantage of it. It provides a lot of information with respect to what their services are and what they do on our campus day to day. They provide intelligence updates to district leadership. And that's facilitated through a crime analyst. But in addition to the crime analyst that we actually have on staff at community college bureau, there's a entire network of, of, of intelligence resources that go beyond the sheriff's department. The JERK being one of them, that they actually have the ability to tap into for information and resources. And also the point of time collaboration with respect to ICE agents. So that's important because they're our law enforcement liaison. And when you talk about validating whether or not someone is actually an ICE agent or whether or not they're actually on campus for legitimate reason. They're also important for that. There's less of a likelihood that they're not going to get the answers from those individuals, that they're actually notified and they respond. And we actually had a situation out at Harbor where that's how it actually played out. And the team leader there, the deputy there was able to go to those individuals and determine exactly what their purpose was on that campus. And they were not there to do any operations on the campus. It was a staging. But it's important that, that they're there for that, that we understand their role as well. And so I'd like to allow the sheriff's to expand a little bit more with respect to what their community-based policing efforts are. And so I'll have Lieutenant Duba Gonzalez come up.
Good afternoon, President Ino, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Ramon. I just want to quickly say, I just thank you to the presidents who throughout the year, you know, on any issue that came up, they were calling me on the phone, working with me through any issue that came up. Deputy, I mean, Deputy Chancellor Alba Lopez, same thing, working together through any issues. And that to me is community-oriented policing, coming together on the table and just, you know, solving the problems. Now I'm going to pass it on to Lieutenant Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, President Ino, members of the board and Chancellor Ramon. Thank you again for the opportunity to letting us speak in front of you today. It seems like just yesterday we were here presenting to you and our vision of community-oriented policing for the college campuses. In the past, in the 2024 and even 2025, our personnel did an outstanding job of building trust and legitimacy from positive interactions based on more than just a law enforcement interaction. We have a couple of examples that we'd like to share with you that prove that interaction, how it is growing. On November 5th, 2024, there was a city student who fell victim of a theft where her purse was stolen. Inside of her purse was her rent money for the month. Using investigative resources, departmental resources, our detective was able to identify the person who stole it, return the money and actually get a prosecution for that suspect. So one of those small wins, but it just proves how, how that, that bond is getting stronger between us and the community, whether it's the surrounding community or whether it's the actual college, college community, that it is getting stronger. Next slide please. As Director McCray also mentioned, this year we did start with Coffee with the Cop again. Our first event was held at ELAC and we had a very high response and we also had a lot of positive feedback from it. That same, or excuse me, that following month, we had a second Coffee with the Cop at Pierce. Same thing, we had a lot of positive feedback from it and some of the other campuses wanted us to hold them sooner. But unfortunately, summer was coming, so we had to stop and we're going to stop, start again, the beginning of the school year. But the positive, the response was so great that, and successful, that the Associated Student Organization of LA Trade Tech invited us, invited us to have a luncheon with the cop. And at the event, the food was, was terrific, but what made it more memorable is how the students were able to engage with us. They came up to us, they asked us different questions. We were able to tell them the services that we have. They even sat down and played Uno with us. So that was, that was a very, very positive event. And like I said, we're going to start doing them again once the school year starts and we'll figure out when those days are. And if you guys are ever available, you're always more, more than welcome to, to attend them. Next slide please. Our mental evaluation team, there's a couple of examples that I'd like to share on this one. Particularly this one, on November 25th, 2024, a community member was having a mental, mental health crisis. She went to our corporate center building. She went onto the parking structure, a four-story parking structure, and she sat on the side of the ledge threatening to jump. LA Builds was, saw it, they told us about it. We went up there and we talked with the individual. When I was the first one there and as I'm talking to her, all she would tell me, shoot me, shoot me. So she was in a tremendous state of emergency. I kept talking to her. Eventually I asked for additional resources and our team leader, and that's actually one of our secure office from ELAC responded. And they were able to build a little bit closer rapport with her and actually were able to talk her off the ledge. So once that occurred, our mental evaluation team responded. Our mental evaluation deputy, Mange Hees, was able to work with his organizations and get that person help. So, and she was a community member. She wasn't even a, an LACCD student, but those are the type of things that we will do for anyone. Next slide please. And I'm sorry. There was another one. This one was more recently, I'm sorry, we don't have a picture of it. Just last month, July 3rd, a student at ELAC again, was having a mental health issue or crisis and went onto the fourth floor of the G5 math building and threatened to jump. Our personnel responded with the campus personnel and they were able to talk the individual out. And they were able to get him the help that he needs. Our, again, our mental evaluation deputy, along with the license, the ELAC licensed clinical social worker, were able to connect the student with mental health resources and he went on to a full recovery. So, and there is one other example that I'd like to share with regards to emergencies in the sense that in April of 2024, an LA Builds employee had a medical emergency at the corporate center. Builds notified us, we responded. Our deputy assessed the situation and noticed that the individual wasn't breathing. He started doing CPR. We were waiting for fire to show up. We received, we asked for an AED. One of our partners brought an AED. He was about to, or he hooked up all the sensors, he was about to employ it, but then all of a sudden they felt the pulse. So fire luckily showed up a few minutes later, transported him to the hospital. He made a full recovery and actually, I think he was back to work within a month and came to visit us. So just one of the many things that happened last year. And next slide please, thank you. And finally, during this, during the year, our personnel received recognition for their dedication, hard work and commitment to community-oriented policing. Team leader Joseph Yang from Harbor and our other team leader from Trade Tech, Deputy McGee. They always, they were honored with awards from the college community for their integration, positive presence and investment in the college community. And I'd also like to add that Deputy Yang, the award that he received is normally meant for community college employees, but because of his excellence and his dedication, Dr. Dorado was actually able to get him nominated and he won that, that award. So that was a tremendous success for him not really being an employee, but he has invested in the community or in the college community. And again, we, the, we mentioned these events are true examples of community-oriented policing where our personnel achieve trust, legitimacy by establishing positive presence at all the campus campuses. Our personnel are proud to serve nine college campuses and the additional facilities of the Los Angeles Community College. Together with your staff and faculty, we provide a safe and fortunate environment for your college students to study and pursue their dreams. We also provide a positive and safe for the surrounding communities as well. We do have a lot of people that come on to our community, on to our campuses and they engage with us and, and in a positive way. They ask different questions, they feel safe there. So with the collaboration with everybody, we're going to be able to achieve that even more. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have the pleasure of working with this team in my role and they are, are really amazing. Since I joined as the deputy chancellor, we've been dealing with the fires, we've been dealing with the federal immigration issues. And this team has just been on point the whole entire time. And we're at that time of year where, you know, we're looking at the money. And nobody really wants to talk about the money, but it's a lot of money. So this year, I just want to kind of go over the cost adjustments that are built within our contract. They, the county has what's called a cost recovery billing model that is set forth by the county itself. Typically, there's a rate increase between three and four percent. This year it was four percent. And just as a note, the sheriff's personnel did not receive a salary increase, but there are increasing costs that contribute to the overall increase. There's an increase in benefits, there's other things that are coming into play that the county looks at when they're creating the, the rates for us. If in our contract, we have an automatic three percent liability fund assessment that's, you know, was agreed to when we went to initial contract. And for this year, we did not change any of our staffing levels. So we're keeping our staffing levels the same. The captain and the lieutenant went out to each of the college leadership teams this last year, did kind of a close out at the end of the year. Talked about challenges and opportunities. And so I think at this point in time, we're, we're ready to continue services as they have. Next slide. So I wanted to provide an overview, just being transparent about the actual budget allocation and the costs. So in 2023, the first year of the contract, we spent a maximum of 25 million 209,000. In '24, we saw a little bit of a, of an increase when it came to funding of our cadet program. And then this year, last year, we opted to discontinue the cadet program as part of this contract. And so that in '25, you didn't see too much of an increase in the contract because we took that out. And that kind of ate up the four percent increase plus the three percent. And then for this upcoming year, you'll see that we have the liability at three percent. The overall increase in the 575 of four percent, which brings us for a maximum contract amount this year for 26 million 585. So we just wanted to provide this information as you'll be taking a vote on this item later in the day.
Thank you. Board colleagues, do we have questions?
Yeah. I just have a comment. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, I have a comment. For the lieutenant, you say you had a great time at the, the, the schools that pretty much, you know, when you got to actually go out there and meet the students, you see the students were actually excited to see you. They actually had a lot to say. Taking opportunities of that, when we're hosting, especially this month of August or fall will be starting. So take that opportunity, maybe having your team get a table for our welcome week, for Spirit Week, any type of events that's going on that's involving students. We have new students rolling all throughout the year, so not everybody knows who you are. So just to keep that presence there, take advantage of the opportunities that they're hosting on the campuses itself to make sure your sheriff team knows, make sure the students on the campus know who their sheriff team is.
So thank you, Senator trustee Francis. So what we've been doing, we started this maybe about a little bit over a year ago. So at the beginning of every school year, we have, weather permitting, of course, we have our, each campus, the, the personnel there set up a tent and hand out water. And they also hand out pamphlets, making sure that they know what services we have. We also do that towards the end of the school year during finals. People tend to, because of finals, with everything's going on, people tend to, to be a little bit stressed out. So we do those things. So, but yes, we will continue to do those things. But that's the biggest thing that, that we do right now that we've been implementing is that every, at the beginning of every school year, that for that first week, they at least go out there, make sure that they know who we are, what services we have available, what the telephone number is. One thing that, and I think you and I have discovered that a lot of people didn't know that we do escorts. So that's one thing that we've been really, really emphasizing on is that if somebody doesn't feel safe, if they need an escort to their car at night, at day, whatever the situation is, that we're there. So, so that's one of the other things that we do emphasize as well.
Okay, and when you're, when, in the beginning of the year, are you just, are you with, are you doing a part of an event? Or do you just go out there, pick a day of the week and just go out there and say, we're sure.
So each camp is a little bit different, but for the most part, we set up a table either central campus or by the bookstore in that general area. And then we just have a table there and hand out waters. And then we're just there for the big, for the day PMs, those kind of things. So at least people can see us and we still do regular patrol checks of the campuses. So people are, come up to us and ask us what, what we have going on and those kind of things.
Yeah, so yeah, that's good. Definitely take advantage of the opportunities though of the events on, on the campus itself. Yeah.
Yes, when we're invited to them. Sometimes we're not, but when we are invited, we, we will try, we do try and go to all of them. Our team leaders are really good with working with which one of their campuses. So they try and attend as many as they can. Unfortunately, sometimes we can't, but for the most part, we, we're there. We also work with our recruit, recruitment office and they're also there as well. On our last one at, our last Coffee with the Cop at Pierce, we actually had a few people apply for our department. So, but they, they go out as much as they, they can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on, to my colleagues on the right? Trustee Anderson, trustee Hoffman?
I just want to thank you for coming here today and making the presentation. This is a very different presentation than we've had in the past. I've been on this board for a little over 10 years. And I just really appreciate how you integrated all of our recommendations when we made those recommendations into the work that you're doing. And just wanted to express appreciation. I do want to do another like climate survey because when I was board president, we did put out a survey when the contract was coming up to see how folks felt and they were. And there were a lot of strong feelings, we even did town halls. I'd like to do that again, just to make sure as we come toward the end of this contract and probably think about, you know, putting out a new RFP for another five-year contract. And hopefully the cost isn't going to change dramatically. When I started on this board, it was 18 million, now we're up to 26 and a half million. I understand like costs have escalated, but you know, hopefully the department, the county will be reasonable with us since we're good partners and you're good partners. But thank you for the work that you're doing and I, hopefully the response on our campuses is just as positive. And so, thank you.
Great. Anyone else to my left?
No, we're good. I, yes, I think like trustee Hoffman said, we're, we're in our, past our second year of this new transition of style. And it's great to see a thorough presentation on how we're adapting to a campus community policing or security system. And, and I think we are generally very appreciative of what you all have been doing. We heard SCIU also commend you on the partnership in keeping our employees safe. So we do very much appreciate that. I agree with trustee Hoffman, you know, we have a, two years left. And so we don't want to wait till the end to try to do an evaluation. So I think these updates and everything to kind of make sure we're accommodating our campus needs as well as within your abilities is really something that we're, we're looking forward to. So the surveys and the town halls and stuff, because I think I came in to this board position as we were voting on this contract and, and I know it had taken quite some time to get it approved. And so we can do everything that we need possible to ensure that this is the, the correct partnership. That's I think the most desirable outcome from our, my colleagues on the board.
I'd like to mention that I'm presently working with DC Kuro to get one out in the fall to the broader community, faculty, staff and students.
Great. Yeah. I mean, I think as in general, right? The mental health crises seem to be increasing, you know, for our communities. And that's probably paramount to our safety issues to ensure that everyone on our campus is safe in, in that regard, as well as, you know, other safety issues. And with ICE raids and everything like that, I think strong lines of communication and understanding who we can go to is, is really important. So thank you for that.
And chancellor?
Just again, thank you. And I do want to inform the trustees, this matter is under W seven. You can either vote as consent, if you happen to want to pull it, you can do that as well. But it's W seven and it'll be before you in just a short bit. Thank you.
Anything else chancellor from your report?
Now that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Oh, yes, please.
What was the, not on the side, what item was the one that about? Yeah.
Yeah. Agenda item EEO is?
J three.
Great. Okay. Thank you chancellor and thank you for that, for those reports. Very helpful for us to move on our agenda. Next is the combined consent calendar, matters requiring majority vote. This is for J one through J 11. So we are now reviewing combined consent calendar for J one through J 11. These items include consent calendar for human resources, academic affairs, student services, budget, finance, business and facilities. I think we want to pull?
Day three for a separate vote.
Day three, yeah. If we can pull J three, so may I have any other items on this agenda? J one through J, oh, sorry, J one through V 11 that we want to pull for discussion? No? Okay. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for item J one through V 11 with the exception of J three?
Some move.
So moved by trustee Henderson, trust, second by trustee Veras. Any other discussion items that we want to require additional information on any of these? No? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee, student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bonna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
All right. And now if we can vote, can I get a motion and a second to approve item J three? That was the EEO one. Move to prove. Move to prove by trustee Hoffman? Second by trustee Vella, um, discussion? Any further discussion? That was the presentation that, sure, trustee Henderson?
Concerned, I, I apologize for I left my notes.
No, please.
At home. On page 13 of the, of the certification form, where it under observed outcomes, what successes have been observed. And under many of the items on this particular page, it says none. So review of district EEO, D I E, D I policy, convey and publications and website district, commitment to diversity in EEO, addressing diversity issues in a transparent and collective fashion. What? Why do we not see outcomes? Or specifically what successes have been observed and we've been trying to do these?
Chancellor, if I may, the team has evolved and we have a fairly new team that are working through this report. They are identifying resources and trainings to help us better put our policies and programs in place. So they're working internally. We have not implemented things that will lead to outcomes at this point, but we are working on that.
So these are more things, goals, things that you're working on to move forward?
Correct. And we have not, we have not achieved them yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
No.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras? Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't have any disclosures. May I have a motion and a second to adopt business items W one through W 12?
Some move.
So move by trustee Hernandez, second by trustee Henderson. Are there any items which require additional information, board colleagues? No. No disclosures. Lupe, may I have a roll call please?
Student trustee advisory vote Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next item X, facilities items. May I have a motion and a second to adopt, adopt facilities items X one through X 11, uh, X 10?
Some move.
So move by trustee Henderson, second by trustee Veras. Are there any items which require additional information? No disclosures. Lupe, can I have a roll call please?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino? Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
All right. So now moving on to item Y, one, employee actions for extensions of contracts and step increases for college presidents. Board members, before we proceed to vote on the next item, I will read the following language for record. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953C3, which is part of the Brown Act, we are required to make an oral summary of proposed actions on salaries, salary schedule or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive level positions as defined in subdivision D of Government Code Section 3511.1 during the open meeting in which final action will, is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary of our positions such as chancellor, deputy chancellor, vice chancellor and the college presidents. The agenda items now before us is to, one, approve the extension of employment contract for college president Barry Gervens, James Limbaugh, Anthony Culpepper, Luis Dorado, Armita Ornellas and Arslan Aguilar through June 30th, 2028. And also, number two, to approve the extension of employment contract for president Emmanuel Gabrue and Alfred Recorders through June 30th, 2028. An authorized one-step advancement to step five of $26,895.95. A 500 per month car allowance will be applied to the base salary and they will be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as received by our unrepresented classified administrators, including, including retiree health benefits. May I have a motion and a second on item Y one?
Some move.
Second.
Move by trustee Vella, second by trustee Henderson. Any discussion colleagues?
Yeah, I just have a little, you know, just want to make sure, you know, that as we move on with our, you know, process to rightfully, you know, retain our college presidents, I do want to make sure that we continue to also adhere to the evaluation from the chancellor of the presidents and then further discuss with the board. So that the board is also aware of our colleges and what is transpiring there. And certainly I think as we all talked about today, ensuring that, you know, our college presidents are also meeting the highest standards as our employees do. And that we, our role as a fiduciary board is to ensure that we keep, you know, the process of evaluation. I think it's a all-around good thing for the district. I think also for our college presidents to know where they stand. So I just wanted to ensure that with that being said, you know, that we move forward to, to support these, this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Board colleagues?
I just have one question based off of the public comment. Could we get just, and I know, I think we've been briefed on this, but I, I just, can we just get a reminder of when evaluations have been done for the respective presidents?
Yes. Chancellor?
Thank you for the question, trustee Hernandez. So there was a bit of a transition with my coming on board and chancellor Rodriguez finishing out his term. The evaluation process was completed in, the cycle itself was completed in December. Most of that time, clearly I was not here. So the, our chancellor and deputy chancellor were able to complete the evaluations and the recommendations of the current presidents. We do have our policy as well as a guides in terms of the evaluation cycle. I'm recommending a July one, based on this morning's conversation, a July one to June 30th cycle, which means that as of effective of July one, I began now to evaluate the presidents going forward with the recommendation at the end of the year, which would be June 30th. These again, evaluations were completed with the prior administration and the recommendation to, to move these forward. So there is one final piece that I think I should address in the interest of the comments that are made in the public. There is a cycle that the presidents go through. It's a three-year cycle, the first and the second year is a, it's a comprehensive evaluation, but it's not a 360. The 360 valuation happens in the third year. There is a guide in terms of a required participation by stakeholders that includes the senate and labor groups as well as other stakeholders in the college. Some presidents went through a comprehensive evaluation this time around. Others will do so in the upcoming year, but it is every third year that a president is evaluated through what we call a 360 or, you know, from other stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Hoffman?
Thank you chancellor. So I guess I'm confused. I thought a comprehensive evaluation kind of translated into a 360. So can you just give us an idea of who had a comprehensive evaluation and what is a comprehensive evaluation? Because based on the public comment, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. All presidents were evaluated, but some had a comprehensive and some had a basic. Is that?
Yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, I, I don't call it basic because there is no such thing. But, but it is, I'm distinguishing between an evaluation and a 360. That's probably a better way not to confuse you, trustee Hoffman, because you're correct in the terminology. I believe there were four presidents that had a 360. And we had three, four presidents that had, actually there was three presidents that had a basic, let's call it. There, we have an interim, as you know, and I myself was in transition. So, so again, four, 360, three basics.
Okay. I, I mean, I was just trying to extrapolate from the public comment what the issue was. And I, if I were to interpret it, the issue is that not all of the presidents who were due for a comprehensive.
No, I, I think.
Received a comprehensive, correct?
Well, that, that was inferred, but I think if it was inferred, then all, some that were due for a 360 did not receive one, that would be incorrect. All presidents that were due for a 360 received it. There are some presidents that will be in a 360 this year that only had been presidents the second year. So I think the comment that was made is appreciated, but it was not accurate. All presidents who were due for a 360 did in fact receive one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez, are you okay with the response?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board colleagues? No. Okay. With that said, roll call please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you. So now we have item Z, recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, could you please provide a plea, brief explanation on the next three action items?
Thank you for this item. Again, these are recommendations, two of which are related to board rules. We have board policy 2105. This is the board policy related to student trustees. And you will see, know in there that this is primarily a, a change for technical, primarily technical issues. Let me pull my notes here. It addresses special elections as it relates to student trustees so that there's no, in the event that we have a vacancy, it outlines the process for a special election within the 30 days outlined. Also, it outlines how we now handle elections online in accordance with our current process. And it sets forth how candidates can be nominated either by themselves or for others. So again, it's pretty much current process. We're updating the board rule to reflect our new process with the way folks are nominated, with the way we handle special elections and again, the way we actually run the election itself.
Thank you.
Board policy 2220 is the committees of the board. So these are your committees, includes standing ad hocks and otherwise. Primarily technical in nature. Again, we're rewarding some of the language there, cleaning up some things, but you'll see the green there, if you go down, it's basically been moved to a different location. As I read through this, I didn't see anything of substance other than technical terminology and adding particular areas as well. These are both second readings, they came to you last month. But again, primarily technical updates to both of these policies.
Sorry chancellor, I meant, I needed to go to motion for Z one.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I was going to read through all those. You want to do each one?
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, those, if we want to do those two and then I'll go to item number three.
Okay. Can I get a motion and a second to approve item Z one?
Some move. Second.
Move by trustee Hoffman, second by trustee Henderson. Well, any discussion? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
May I have a motion and a second on item Z two?
Some move.
Move by trustee Henderson, second by trustee Ino. I did have a comment for, for item Z two. I just wanted to make sure that we would add the they/them pronouns because there's his, hers, but not they/them. So if we can just add amended to add that.
We'll make do to that and we'll have to bring it back for an additional vote with the final copy next month.
Thank you. Yeah. Lupe, roll call please?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you, item Z three chancellor.
Thank you again. Um, um, president Ino. So you wrote it on the resolution for pars. This is actually the the agreement itself to enter uh into an agreement with pars uh for the purposes of providing a supplemental retirement plan uh for our employees. The presentation was uh earlier, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. Uh, some of the elements of the SERP include a seventy percent of of um payout of final base pay. Uh, and this annuity will be paid uh to the employees who opt to participate in monthly or annual summits based on their selection with pars. Uh, and uh this would be uh a comeback to you in November uh for a full vote if in fact uh we meet the threshold participants uh to be able to go forward with pars. But this particular item uh allows us to enter uh into an agreement with pars uh to pursue the supplemental retirement plan.
Great. Um, may I have a motion and a second on item Z three?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Henderson. Second by trustee Ino. Um, discussion. I think just generally speaking, this conversation and the public comments by our 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 union labor groups has been really helpful um in allowing us to support this process. So thank you for your feedback on all of this. It's it's really critical to how we make decisions. So thank you. Um, any other comments or anything? No? Lupe, um, roll call please.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Great. Um, now there are eight notices for item AA, notice and reports on informatives. No action is required at this time. Um, I think the only comment that I did have is um also on item AA five, board policy twenty-three fifty. There's also um, it's miss, it has she, her, her, or his, but can you add the they/them pronouns? Thank you. Um, okay. So. Hey, we're moving through this agenda. Uh, okay. Item BB, announcements and indications of future proposed actions by members of our board of trustees. Um, would any of my colleagues like to make an announcement or indicate future proposed actions? I know um trustee Francis did say that this Friday, there is a um a student meeting. Um, did you have other ones that you'd like to announce? Anything else happening?
Um, or, yeah, so far, no. My biggest goal is if you guys can just stay after the meeting, so I can um reintroduce myself to have business cards to give out so we can keep the pipeline going. Due to the fact I only see you once a month, so it'd be great if I could just keep in contact with you throughout the month before I see you every uh Wednesday. Um, other than that, you guys said also I can invite you as well. Uh, if I ever invite you to one of my meetings, you'll be going first. My meetings start at nine thirty in the morning. Um, nine forty will give you um a link for you to join in. So you could go in, introduce yourself, who you are, and you can just jump right back out. Any guests that I do have, I'll put you guys first. Cause my meetings are are tense, so I put you guys first, get in and get out. You guys are welcome to stay for me as well. But I would like to see you guys there to get to know some students because they, these are students, uh, these are the presidents of the colleges, so they're definitely are beneficial for you, especially if you want something to be done on a particular college campus. That is your time to get your nick and pitch going. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anything else, board? Yes, trustee Henderson?
I'm I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I just wanted to just make a request for consideration of the board. We have four standing committees and we have a student trustee and I would love if our student trustee could somehow be incorporated into our standing committees, um either as a, I don't know, non-voting term representative for students or something if we can consider what that would look like.
Yeah, I always wonder why we don't do that. Like, I think every committee should always have the student, well, obviously, the student trustee can't be at every committee, especially if they, but maybe a student president from a college. I mean, it would be up to you to assign someone, but I think it'd be a great idea just to have them be a um, the way I would see it, like, um, would be a non-participatory, but yet kind of what the student trustee's power is here, where they can motion and all that.
General council has some recommendations or clarifications.
So uh to trustee Henderson, I mean, that's an excellent uh uh question. Part of the reason is, is for quorum purposes, even though the student trustee is a non-voting member, it then affects the fact that there are more members than the board rule designates. One potential solution could be if you want a student voice, is to have the student trustee designate a student to attend uh so that we can have a student there. We would love to work with trustee Henderson, student trustee. There is a reason because of quorum purposes, even though the student trustee is a non-voting member. Standing committees have a particular, in the board rule, number of people that can participate. Um, but if we want to look at how we would increase the student voice, we would love to have that conversation.
Well, don't we already do that with the college president? Isn't one college president assigned to our committees?
But they're not a voting member.
They're not, but it, but the point is that a student can also be the assigned.
And that's what we're, we're saying, we could, we can, we would want to look at exactly how we would do it. I think the student trustee is different than a president because a student trustee is actually a trustee.
They say a student body president.
Exactly, and I think, I think trustee Vela. Yeah, that's exactly what we would love to explore, where we have an assigned student. That's not necessarily the student trustee to ensure that there's a student voice and we could work with the student trustee that may be assigned.
You remind me working with the student trustee to get the student voice there so that we have somebody and we'll make sure by Friday, we have a designated president that will be attending the meetings.
Thank you as well. And um also um for um for Jeffrey, um what I have in mind as well is that um with my presidents being um brand-new leaders, um my main focus is is them taking care of my college campus level. I have the ability to time to attend meetings on the district level. But in order to keep the flow going, information line of chain, the last thing I wanna do is appoint a student who who's not able to make that meeting and then I lost all of my information. So if you can find a way that a student trustee can just be appointed as well over there and vice versa, if it if it can't happen, it's to be a student, I can, I need to know that as well. But I would like to be there as student trustee, departmental face and all the committees, because I have that time to do that.
Let's definitely have a chat. And we can figure, try and figure this out, but really appreciate the suggestion. Look forward to talking to folks.
Thank you, trustee Francis. That's admirable of you. It's a full ten AM to like seven PM day.
Yeah, I mean, we was here today at nine o'clock until four, about that time.
Great. Um, okay, so any other updates or things? No. Um, okay, great. So now we will move on to item CC, public comments. Um, not matters not on the agenda. So again, the First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board on non-matters, uh matters not on the agenda? There are. Um, okay, so we do have um, the first person is Adrian Panamera.
Yes.
Panamera, sorry.
Yes.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, I want to thank the board of trustees for taking the time to listen to me today. My issue revolves around an urgent request for a correction of payroll placement and enforcement of Personnel Commission Rule seven forty and its protections. I was one of the Los Angeles Pierce College lifeguards that was laid off due to lack of work. Despite being officially laid off effective June thirtieth, I believe I was accidentally placed on payroll at Los Angeles Valley College without my consent. This placement occurred after my layoff date and therefore governed by Personnel Commission Rule seven forty, which requires consent for reemployment action. Uh, but again, I was added to payroll without the acceptance of of an assignment. The personnel director has been in all the emails uh with LA VC uh going back and forth as we try to understand our our perspectives with the issue. But he has not stepped up to bring clarity to the situation. Eventually, the Employee and Labor Relations Department has been added to the emails. But they also have not stepped in to uh offer clarity or to remedy the situation. The board resolution letter that I received on March twelfth cites Rule seven forty as the governing authority of layoff and reemployment rights. Uh, once again, uh I I would just like the uh the Personnel Commission Department and the Employee Labor Relations Department to just help bring uh clarity. And uh I I would also like the the board of the trustees, I ask you, I ask you all for help uh by seeing that they do look this through, uh you know, to to finish resolving the issue. But in addition to that, I understand that um different people may see rules differently, but I also want you guys to be a part of the process to make sure it's objective. Uh, so basically, I'm going with, based on my understanding of how this all went. Um, and with that said, once again, I just ask that um the board of trustees just take a look at the facts of how the layoff went down, what PC Rule seven forty is, how it protects me, and how we should proceed from there. Because as of right now, Valley College needs a lifeguard, but based on my understanding, I have not accepted the assignment. So I have not um reported to to uh to the campus. And so both sides just need clarity to to the situation. Both sides just wanna move forward. I just want the facts, so we can just uh proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Um, so the next um eight folks are speaking to the same topic. And since we have a total of twenty minutes per topic, um, I would like to motion to reduce the time so then all eight people can speak.
Yeah, I'll move it, everybody.
Okay, um, I mean, to be safe, we have two minutes.
Minutes per speaker.
Two minutes per speaker on item. Um, I I will move to do that and then trustee Veras will second. Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno. Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Veras.
Great. Um, so then I will, I'll list the first three so everyone can get their notes prepared. So I first have Vanessa Cold, then Beatrice Alcala, and then Rhonda Guest. Vanessa? Cold, are you here?
Yeah, she's coming.
Uh, Beatrice, are you, are you Vanessa?
Yes, oh, cool, in person, thanks. Can you hear me last time in? Yes. Okay, hey, I'm Vanessa Cold. I'm a student at City College. I wanna thank you guys for giving me a chance to speak here today. Um, I've heard a lot of concern for the well-being of students and faculty, which is fantastic. I can tell you guys really care. So, thank you for that. Um, I wanna talk about something that's negatively affecting me and other students who wanna study journalism, of course. Um, the issue today is the change of our newspaper classes from being scheduled with TBA hours to now being scheduled with specific predetermined times. So what's wrong with scheduling a class at a specific time? First problem is that it makes it harder for students to register for our classes. Now that newspaper courses have specific times, I have to choose between registering to work on the newspaper or registering to take the English class that I wanted to take. For students whose required courses conflict with the new arbitrarily chosen newspaper course times, they just can't register to work on the newspaper anymore. This wasn't a problem before when we had TBA hours. So the new scheduling is forcing down our enrollment numbers by making it harder to register. If you'll allow me an analogy, imagine if you owned a retail store and the general manager blocked off the entrances to the store for a few months and then tried to convince you that since nobody was coming into the store, you needed to shut the store down. Would you think that that manager had good business sense? Would you actually shut down the store or would you just unblock the exits to make it easier for customers to enter? This is essentially what's happening to our journalism department. Administrative choices drive down enrollment numbers, and then they point to that and say they have to cancel our classes. This pattern is reducing my opportunities to learn and to develop a journalism portfolio, and the same is true of all of my fellow journalism students. The second issue is that for newspaper, we have three main classes. Publication, practical editing for news writing, and staff editing for editorial leadership. With our traditional TBA hours, everyone could meet at the same time, which was selected to work for most people. But now reporters, editors, and people doing production are supposed to meet at different times. Do you think that at the LA Times or the New York Times or any publication, the reporters have one meeting and the editors have a totally separate meeting?
Thank you.
How would anything get done? Um, we need to be able to meet as a group. Changing us away from TBA hours shows no consideration for what our students actually need to be able to create our newspaper.
Thank you. Um, next we have Beatrice Alcala.
Good afternoon, members. Uh, I'll let, I just can be just to again, process and bring your attention back. Our program is under attack. They have so much canceled most of the classes. And also they have made the the requirement to thank you, the requirement to uh do a work not as a TBA like the other campuses or the other uh institutions that open journalism, they have TBA. We can, we don't have that. We just are forced to meet a schedule that eight thirty to twelve o'clock. That does not work for anybody and does not make sense. We can see that this is malicious act that you resemble and lower the numbers in your program. I just upset and I just wanna have, make sure that you guys do something about it, because this cannot happen, I think. We need the those TBA hours. We work on Monday evening to early hours and Tuesday night, we cannot meet those hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have Rhonda Guest, Anthony Folsom, and then Angela Johnson. Rhonda Guest?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
You can cut all the flowers, but you cannot hold back the spring. I'm here today to ask for your help with journalism and the TBA hours, what the two students previously discussed. It's been my experience that labs follow lectures or meetings. But this fall, the labs for journalism will not follow the lecture. The lab time will happen on a different day. What this does is it forces students to come to class four days per week for journalism. The journalism classes happen on Mondays and Wednesdays. We have true TBA on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays because that's how journalists work. The decision was reached in a vacuum. The Vama Dean did this on her own because she knows better than forty years of tradition at the LA CCD, the largest community college district in the country. She changed it without consultation, and now that practice is being carried over to the Communication and Speech Department where journalism is going for a clean start, I thought. But maybe not. Maybe it's too soon. This makes City College the outlier. The other three fully functioning journalism programs in this district have TBA hours. They've had them for forty years. If people wanted to know, they could check with someone like the District Discipline Chair, who's had that position for fifty years. She said, Elax, she knows. No. People are going off just doing whatever on their own. I've learned over the years from the lawyers at the Student Press Law Center that this is called burdening the First Amendment. When you make it more difficult for journalism students to practice their craft on a campus by forcing them out of, let's say, spaces where other students are allowed that are public, you're burdening the First Amendment. On June eighth, there were about five journalism students from LACC who covered the downtown marches to protest ICE. I watched the video that one of the students brought back of Dolores Huerta, who was speaking that day. She talked about Cesar Chavez and how one day he said, we need to start a union. If we don't do it, who's going to do it? She told the crowd, never give in to violence, always protest peacefully. And she quoted the poet Pablo Neruda when she said, you can cut all the flowers, but you cannot hold back the spring. And she told the attendees there that day, you're the spring. She gestured to everyone. It was incredible. You're the spring, and I am waiting for you.
Thank you. Um, next is Anthony Folsom, then Angela Johnson, and Luis Primavera.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the board and all other identities in attendance today. My name is Anthony Folsom. I am a proud alumnus of Los Angeles City College's Journalism Program and a former reporter for the Collegian Newspaper. I've interviewed a lot of you in attendance today, so some of you probably remember me. Today, I write for UCLA's Daily Bruin, but it was at LACC where my published works had earned multiple national awards. And I want to be clear, those achievements were not just the result of personal effort. Those, they were possible because I had access to the newsroom, to my peers, and to the flexibility of TBA lab hours that allowed me to work at the highest level, even under challenging personal circumstances. I graduated magna cum laude from LACC and I'm on track to graduate from UCLA with departmental honors. And next summer, I will hopefully begin my master's program in public relations at USC. And none of this would have been possible without the strong foundation layout by LACC's Journalism Program, a program that has been a cornerstone of free expression and student opportunity for over 100 years. I'm here tonight because the recent changes to the Journalism Program's TBA lab hours are not just an administrative tweak. They are part of a long and troubling pattern. For at least the past decade, there have been attempts to defund, dismantle, or outright cancel the program. And each time, students, alumni, and the community have had to fight to preserve it. But it's not just funding and scheduling. There's a documented habit of undermining the rights of student journalists on the LACC campus and in this district. I know this because we have published these things. We've previously been barred from covering public events that by law, we have a constitutional right to attend, such as former LACC President Gallagher's retirement ceremony. We've seen student photographers racially profiled, treated as security threats for simply holding a camera by department chairs, no less. In some cases, sheriffs were called on them while they stood on public grounds doing their jobs as reporters. And when these violations happened, the administration stood silent. When I was a student at LACC, I personally had to work with the American Civil Liberties Union, the Foundation for Indigenous Rights and Expression, and the Student Press Law Center to make sure that this school and the district understood that student journalists know our rights and we will fight for them. That fight was not theoretical. It was necessary for us to continue publishing. Now, the dean of VAMA has unilaterally changed the TBA structure so the main lab is only open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, even though the Collegian produces its print editions on Mondays and Wednesdays. This isn't just inconvenient, it's disabling access to the newsroom. For more than 40 years, journalism classes. I'm sorry?
Final comment? Your two minutes is up.
Okay, I just want to end by saying Walter Cronkite once said, freedom of the press is not just important to democracy, it is democracy.
Thank you. Next is Angela Johnson, then Luis Primavera.
Okay, here I am. Sorry, I'm in shadow. But the lighting is bad. It is what it is. Okay, so I just want to say that what has been done to the Journalism Department at Los Angeles City College goes against, completely against the mission of the district, which is to educate, graduate, and help students transfer to four-year universities or become work-ready. The ability for students to practice the journalism craft through TBA lab hours has been taken away from LACC students only. No other journalism program among the other colleges has their TBA hours taken away and juggled around. This is a shallow attempt at censorship. This negative, it has a negative and chilling effect on the student voice, on free speech. It has a negative impact on the Collegian. The Journalism Program is students. It's all about students learning a valuable craft. LACC and VAMA administrators have been allowed to mess with the schedule of courses and thus have messed with the education of students. What VAMA administrators were allowed to do harmed journalism students directly and indirectly with respect to the scholarship money that is available to journalism students and with the schedule conflicts that my other student, fellow students have talked about. The schedule conflicts are devastating. The remote opportunities which have put students' lives in danger, literally. They need those TBA hours. They need to be able to study remotely. This harm has already been done. The harm has already been done. So now I ask you, I put it to you, the Board of Trustees, please support the Los Angeles City College Journalism Program. Make the powers that be restore the TBA hours of the Collegian. Make the powers that be, the administrators and the VAMA administrators, give back our Collegian Times Magazine once a year in the spring instead of once every two years as they have proposed. Bottom line is the program was working before they broke it. Make them put it back. Even in the Communications Department, make them put back the TBA hours for our magazine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Angela Johnson, then Luis Primavera. Oh, no, that was Angela Johnson. Sorry. Luis Primavera?
He's not on.
Okay, Diane Campbell. And Doreen Sanchez. Well, Doreen Sanchez is on her way up, so we'll go with her next and then we'll do the hand raises after. Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my professor here for being on the job and encourage me to come here today. I'm a seasoned student, a published playwright, dancer, 47 years dedicated to cultural danza stecca. And I found a niche within the Journalism Department. And then right when I'm getting on the groove, these things happen. So I would appreciate that the board looked at the changes, especially since they're done at the strange hours and without any input, above all, without any input from our professor that has dedicated 40 years for a department to be in existence at Los Angeles City College for 40 years, like their theater department, it's quite an accomplishment. And there are students like myself that are extremely privileged. I feel privileged to be walking on campus and however, I have community people that cannot come to campus because they live in traditional homes that they're the way, the women don't come out of the house, especially now with the social issues that we're having and one more thing I just want to add as a journalism student, I've been on campus for three, in three years now. I've never seen the sheriffs walk the streets of our campus. And I'm at Los Angeles City College, Vermont, and Santa Monica. And I just want to add that last, but please somewhere, find it in your budget to walk down the streets. Our children, our high school schoolers come to the campus. And I've seen things that are not okay. So I would ask you to find it in your budget to walk the campus. And also, please stop any type of lab. My lab is on the streets of Los Angeles, the streets of Santa Monica and Vermont. Those are where the issues are. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So is Luis Primavera or Diana Campbell online?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm very grateful to the Journalism Department because at the age of 88, I'm almost finished getting my AA degree. I started in 2007, but I've been taking classes ever since, slow but surely. And and I finally found a place where I could, I could thrive. And I'm so grateful. However, I can't finish my classes and get my degree and with my accumulated credits because I cannot, I'm not stuck in the house because of the society. I'm stuck in the house because I broke my hip and I'm on a walker. And I've been very very depressed because my husband died in January. He was on the staff of the Collegian Magazine and Newspaper in 2008. And this is like a home to me. This is my family. I'm begging you to have some heart because this, this is a program that no one appreciates. Glory was brought to this campus when we won all kinds of awards, national awards with the Associated Press Association. We beat out four-year colleges and we did it because of the guidance and the heart of our professor, Rhonda Guest. So where's the appreciation? This is the kick in the teeth she gets after all the heart she's put into it. So I rest my case. Somebody use some logic and figure out we need to have a magazine in the year 2029 because that's the 100-year anniversary of this college, LA City College. But we're only going to publish in 2028 and 2030. We really missed the mark. We're going to be the laughing stock of the school district and in the world. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Please take care. I think we're just missing Luis Primavera?
Yeah, he didn't show up.
He's not online.
Okay. So that is public agenda items not on the agenda. I will now move to request to address the Board of Trustees regarding closed session agenda matters CC2. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board regarding closed session agenda matters? There is Attorney Andrew Tomazian?
Yes, I'm here.
You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am here on behalf of Ms. Ellen Vardanian to respectfully appeal the recommendation for the expulsion without reconsideration as stated in the letter by President Dr. Emmanuel Gibrou on May 7, 2025. This appeal and statement is brought in accordance with Administrative Procedure 5520I.G. and was timely submitted. I want to begin by stating that any and all accusations brought to my clients lack any shred of evidence. The school claims that my client, Ms. Vardanian, received funds from financial aid. However, they have yet to provide any anyone with the proof of funds that they were actually dispersed. This fact alone concerns regarding every single accusation that was brought against my client that the school has made. From the beginning, Ms. Vardanian fully cooperated with the college. The school made allegations that Ms. Vardanian was awarded $19,000 in financial aid distributions. However, the school today fails to establish and provide any sufficient documentation showing that Ms. Vardanian was actually awarded this amount. There has been no bank statements, no copies of checks, and no and any sufficient forms of payment that support this allegation made by the school. She personally met with the dean Juan Alvarez and submitted all detailed written explanations. She clarified that she never received any financial aid dispersments, not from LAAC and not from any school district. In fact, her FISA application remained incomplete for two years because of her, because of technical rejections of her proof of citizenship, despite multiple efforts to upload the necessary documents using both computers, campus and personal computers. The dean and any staff at the financial aid office from the school failed to help Ms. Vardanian complete and provide upload sufficient and proper documentation to have her application approved once and for all. She has stressed the severity of the situation numerous times with the school and with the knowledge of the FISA department and how the applications work. Our office has also addressed this issue in an appeal letter dated May 9, 2025. Following the misleading encounter, we find it difficult to believe or confirm any other allegations made by this school. The lack of communication as well as the failure to provide the necessary documentation and information to one of their own students is overly concerning. As for the login activity, she had explained that she routinely used a virtual private network or a VPN for cybersecurity. VPNs are common amongst students and professionals alike, especially when accessing school platforms like Canvas and from public and shared networks. The use of a VPN can cause login data to reflect foreign locations when the user is physically on campus. The sole reason for anybody to use a VPN is it could be bad Wi-Fi connection at the location and this is when the VPN comes in handful with providing a more fast-paced network. It is not illegal or is it unusual? It is a digital security tool and it is not evidence of deceit. And
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will now recess to closed session. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section 54950, and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the meeting will now recess to closed session. Thank you, everyone, for today.